Starting with my screen right.
And Fisher, uh, they know.
Roger Smith, Mr.?
Doug Neely, where?
Happy to be here.
Should we have introductions of the other people at this point?
No, she says that on purpose.
We have future agenda items. Anybody want anything on the future agenda items? And James, the city just come in and he's raised his hand.
You're doing, you're just right here.
Uh, James, did you want to get a future agenda item? While your team is going to say, there's one more item to be added onto this agenda, I believe. And that's to set up a time for the commissioners, the meeting of our, uh, our judge, the reacquaintment.
That's on your futures.
Well, that's one future, that's one future agenda we'll be having is to sit down with the, I, I know we're going to sit down with her, but, uh, we need to sit up today, I presume, because she has to have it before it gets first.
Actually, her, her contract expires August 1st, not April 1st.
When did that get April?
Um, it was incorrect on the, in the.
Oh, well, welcome on April, it was her letter. Well, I guess you don't have to worry about it too much. So I'll strike that from the current picture that, uh, James, you get it?
Yes, I do, thank you. Um, we'd like to request some, uh, some help, uh, on behalf of some citizens who are concerned about the, uh, noise being generated by the hazing of sea lions at the falls. Um, I've had a couple of citizens, uh, I'm aware of numerous issues with citizens and their pets. Um, I'm, I'm above the falls and can hear it myself. Uh, and it's, uh, boy, in an hour, there's a lot, a lot of explosions. And, uh, so I think, uh, if we could get some, uh, a discussion going on that and see if there's alternatives to, uh, that process, um, a lot of the neighborhood neighbors in McLaughlin and Canema would be appreciated.
Um, I'd like to suggest if, uh, maybe after the meeting that I can get some details from you and also want to know from the commissioners, what I can do is make a phone call to the agency that's doing the hazing and let them know that we're getting complaints at our level. They may be getting them as well, but I can also, um, make that known to them and then maybe even grab the letter if that isn't enough, uh, to make some changes if the commissioner would like me to explore that.
Hey, you explored the individual, I think, uh, the state agent called me up and I suggested he contact the CIC and he is scheduled to make the presentation, CIC doesn't need.
I matched the whole world on the, on the gunther and still they didn't.
What time in the morning is this day?
Yeah, it's constant.
You mean, point four test?
Well, at least during the daylight, I was.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, when I started noticing and, and noticing how much, I can hear it within my house with the, you know, all the doors and windows closed, so.
Shot guns or something?
Yeah, I thought it was gun stuff, it's why I was looking. Um, it's, it's, uh, it's significant.
Okay. Okay, any other future agenda items? With that, we'll go on to the discussion of the structural report on the Ermertinger House.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Neilian Commissioners. I would first like to introduce, uh, to my left over here, Mark Nelson. Uh, Mark's a structural engineer and his company is very good at engineering and probably have given you some information as well. And then, of course, you all know Denise Sky, our Assistant Parks and Recreation Director. Um, we, uh, as you all know, we've been evaluating some, uh, structural concerns at the Ermertinger House over the last several months. Um, actually Denise has been quite proactive and aggressive in, in really helping to discover and, and track and trace these issues and, and helped me quite immensely with making some recommendations on moving forward. Um, uh, we enlisted the services of, of Mark Nelson. Uh, he's a structural engineer who's done some other work for the city and, um, we, you know, and respect and trust his work and, and, uh, we got him on board pretty quickly to take a quick look, a first cursory look. Um, that, that immediate look led us to, uh, take some, uh, very quick action back in, I think, November when we shored up the building. We did some emergency shoring on the structure just to, just to really stabilize things as we, as we continue to evaluate. And then over the last, oh, two, two and a half months or so, um, uh, Mr. Nelson's been doing a full structural, uh, analysis for us and that is the, um, the report that you've received in your agendas. Um, I'm sure you've all read that, digested it and you understand everything that it says. Uh, that was sarcasm, I know. I know, uh, we're going to talk, uh, we're going to talk in, uh, hopefully, uh, a little bit of layman's terms to, to make, make this, uh, clear to you what's going on. But what we'd like to do is, um, uh, I'd like to have Mr. Nelson give you a brief, um, summary of that report in his own words, uh, and then, um, wrap that up with a, with a few other comments. Um, before we do that, though, we'll turn it over to Mr. Nelson. Uh, I just want to mention one thing before I forget, uh, just to let you know, this is just an FYI. Um, we are going to be sometime in the next two weeks or so, the movie, when it's scheduled, I just said. Okay, so around the 17th and 18th of this month, uh, we are going to be moving all of the contents out of the Ermertinger House and putting them into storage. And we're, we're working with the Hardings on coordinating because they have some of their own personal items and, and so, uh, but also, so we're doing that for a couple reasons. One, just to, to make sure that those items are all safe and secure. And secondly, um, as you'll see in a moment from the discussion, we're going to need to do something with the facility and, and we need the items and the contents to not be in the building. So just want to let you know in case you see stuff moving out or hear of that, that that would be going on. Um, so with that, I'd like to, uh, ask Mark to give you a summary of the, the report and then, uh, we'll kind of wrap that up and, and leave, uh, question, like, type of your questions. So, Mark?
As Scott said, um, back in November, I was initially contacted to look at what we thought was a minor issue. Um, it appeared that, um, the floor was starting, second floor was starting to drop in, on the east wall. Um, we had some finishes removed off the wall and determined that connections don't look so good, so we, um, did an emergency shoring to ensure that that floor wouldn't drop. Um, after that happened, Denise was watching the building closely and, and started to see some other things transpiring there and she asked me to come back and a decision was made to do a complete analysis. Um, and that was the report that Scott mentioned. Um, the report that we produced basically followed the guidelines of ASCE 31. Um, it's this document here, it's a document put out by FEMA that, um, has a very basic checklist for buildings similar to this. Um, it creates a national standard compared to other buildings. Um, but analysis like this isn't complete in that you don't go through and check every single member in the house. You, you. Okay, that's okay. You run through the building and there are a series of checklists, um, and identify whether or not components within the building meet the checklist or not. If they don't meet them, then you can run some supplemental calculations to check it even further. Um, but again, I just do want to state that not everything was checked in there. This was basically, this was a FEMA evaluation. So that process includes, of course, walkthrough. Um, there was, there was a similar report done in 2002 when the master plan was completed. At that time, a lot of the finishes were not removed and the architect and engineer involved couldn't see the framing. Um, this time Denise arranged to have framing removed where the wall met the floors so we could see how it was actually constructed. Um, that was done, I was able to visualize that. Um, then we finished the checklist that were in this document and completed some follow-up calculations. Um, there were a couple items that were non-compliant and so we further checked those. Um, the building basically is a two-story structure. It's basically rectangular. Um, it's similar to modern construction. It's, we got two-by-studs, um, for the walls. It has, um, floor joists that span east and west and it has roof joists that span north and south. In 1986, when the house was moved, um, there was some over-framing put on the roof. It originally had a flat pitch roof and I believe there was some leakage issues and so there's a decision made to put over-framed the roof on it. That over-framing, um, has stressed the existing roof. It wasn't really built to a real good standard and there are some obvious signs in the building of the original roof sagging. Um, so that, that over-framing was one issue that we'll discuss there. So that, just wanted to give you kind of a brief, um, description of the building. Um, we're going to break this down into some, what I'm basically going to tell you are the, the issues that we, we found to kind of give you a picture of what we discovered in the building and a couple, put maybe fixes to it. Found, foundation. Um, during the course of this study, we determined that there was a building at the site previous to this house being moved there. We believe it was the old, old city police station. Um, there, because of that, we're not sure that the, that, that building had a basement, whether or not it was properly backfilled before this foundation was put in. Um, we, we've seen some signs of settlement in the soil. There's a stretch on the northwest portion of the house, an eight-foot section under the footing where the, the foundation is actually not touching the dirt. It's, it's spanning eight feet. Um, that soil has rocks there. Um, exterior foundation, perimeter walls. Uh, we're, we're observing cracking in the foundation walls. Um, when I was initially called there in November, there was not real evidence of crack. It has escalated quite a bit in the last few months and there are cracks in several locations now. Denise has put some monitoring equipment on there and some, um, crack gators, they're called, and there's, we're noticing they're widening. It just hasn't stopped, it's still, it's still moving. Some of the pier footings in the center of the house, um, might be undersized or not spaced close together, which is causing some of the floor to drop. We've noticed that there's a dip in the middle of the floor, the center of the building, and that could be attributed to some of the soil issues. Based on what we're seeing, our recommendation is to get a formal, be a technical, um, investigation for the site, which would include subsurface, um, explorations that has taken some boring down to the bedrock. We need to find out if there is indeed, um, unconsolidated fill under there, um, groundwater or anything that could be causing the settlement. We really don't know how to address the problem until we know what it is. Um, so we think that's a fairly important step in this. Uh, we, we know there's something going on because you can see it, we should have to ask the attorney at that. Um, framing issues, I, in the report, I broke these up into two main issues and I think I'll summarize them here again in that manner. First type of vertical force resistance system, that's basically what keeps the house up from vertical loads, from the self-weight of the building, um, people walking in it, furniture and snow loads, you know, the gravity system. Um, I noted the roof system when we were there, ceiling joists are noticeably sagging. This issue was addressed and brought up in the previous report and it hasn't been addressed yet. The second level floor joists on the, on the, um, west side of the house appear to be undersized or not spaced or too spaced too far apart to support the type of loads that you would have for public access, the building code loads. Um, those need to be checked. They, they, quick numbers indicate some of those are not sight-able. Some of the floor framing over the entryway at some point has been cut back from the walls. It's not standing from wall to wall. Uh, that needs to be repaired, fixed. Um, there's been loads of items in the house that weren't originally meant to hold the floor up. There are some connections on the west side of the building from the floor joists to the wall that don't appear adequate and this prompted us to recommend a shore. And those have now been stabilized temporarily, but they need to be fixed for a long-term solution. Um, east side, east side. On the west side of the house and the east side, on the main level of the foundation, the original construction included the joists attaching to the building in these bearing seats that were knocked and were carved out and it was sitting in there. Um, and I don't know if you had a chance to look at the pictures in the report, but some of those drawers are pulled out far enough that they're not even sitting on the seats anymore. There's a very high potential that that floor could actually drop if any further movement happens. Uh, that, that's a concern, uh, the first floor joists at the foundation. Um, we don't know if that was caused by continuous movement or if it occurred when it was moved. Um, more exploration has to be done with that. We just know that it's there. You can visually see that those joists aren't properly supported.
But there are nothing supporting it, so it's not going up or down?
So far, yeah. Um, we're, we're noticing one problem in the southwest corner that we're keeping a eye on, but so far it's still there. Uh, there's some deterioration of the wood and dry rot was observed in some of the floor joists, um, in the crawl space on the west side. Um, we, we've noticed a large percentage of the walls on the first and second level are not plumb and they're not completely vertical. They're pushed out and, and a couple cases we noticed on the west wall, they're pushed out at the bottom almost three and a half inches. Uh, if you drop a plumb line down, they're, they're offset almost four inches. That, long-term, that could be a problem and we'll talk about some of the seismic issues. Um, that in and of itself may not be an issue, but combined with all these other things, that can present a problem in the long term. In a nutshell, that's what we found with the, the vertical system. Uh, the other system that we looked at was a lateral force resistance system. Those are the elements in the house that resist horizontal loads, so wind pressures on the walls, um, horizontal motions of the ground and the seismic event. Those typically, the, the buzzwords for those in engineering world, sheer walls or brace panels. But ASCE 7 does, or sorry, excuse me, ASCE 31 does, is it recognizes that older buildings aren't built to the new standard, but there is some capacity there. It takes advantage of archaic systems and tries to use them and sets a minimum resistance. Will these minimum, these old systems keep the building up to a minimum life safety standard? And so the lows in here aren't quite as high as the requirement of the building code, but they're now taking a check to see whether or not it meets life safety requirements. This building was checked for life safety and not immediate, there's two different categories, immediate occupancy or life safety. Life safety is a standard which states the structure in event of a seismic event will still stand and allow the occupants to get out. Doesn't mean it isn't going to get damaged or repair wouldn't be required, but at least the occupants can get out. Um, that was the, the level that was checked here. The other options in the occupancy, that would be, um, something similar to a fire station or a police station where in a seismic event you have to go back in and everything has to be functional. That wasn't practical for this structure, it's a museum and it doesn't require that. The walkthrough that we conducted found some issues with the, with the lateral system. Basically, we didn't, it, it outlines you have to have minimal connections between the roof and the walls and the floors and the foundation to make sure that everything stays together when it shakes. Um, we found some problems with the roof-to-wall connections, some problems with floor-to-wall connections and some problems with the foundation-to-wall connections. We ran the quick checks, calculations that I mentioned earlier to check the sheer walls because the checklist items said it doesn't work, but we said, okay, let's run the calc and do a more complete analysis of the, the data. The sheer walls don't meet the minimum requirements, um, in the guidelines. It's horizontal siding that's applied to the inside of the house and it doesn't meet the minimum requirements. The foundation connections that I mentioned don't appear to be good for either horizontal loads or vertical loads. Those will need to be updated. So that's kind of a basic summary of, um, what I stated here. Are there any questions about any one of these issues? I was going to talk about a couple overall repair options, but I thought maybe I had a secret questions. There are two, we identified two ways that we believe this can be fixed. Um, it's taking all of these issues together. The one method is to maintain the structure as it is. Fix the foundation, replace the roof and fix all these little framing issues that we identified. That may require, depending on what the geotechn information comes back saying that we would have to back the house up, put a new foundation or fix the foundation. Basically leave the house as it is, try to fix it. The other option, from an engineering point of view, I don't know, we would have to pursue looking into this, I don't, don't know if it meets the historic guidelines, but another option would be to remove architectural finishes, save those. Take the building shell down, rebuild a brand-new building from the ground up. Put the architectural finishes back on just the way they were. Um, how, when that's done, you don't know that it was fixed, but that is another option. Um, there's quite a difference, we believe, in costs of doing those two options. Um, but from an engineering standpoint, we want to point out that those are two, two options.
I want to ask you something. Did you actually jack the building that you were talking about? You mean the house to another location, the, the foundation and all?
Sure, it's, it's been moved twice already, it certainly could be, you bet.
So, well, just, the, the situation of Jack and Evan doing here occurs to not be an issue? Or there wasn't, that's not a foundation?
No, well, I, what would have to happen is it would have to be sequenced in a safe manner. I think the foundation would have to be the first one. It would be dapped up. If the walls need to be brought in, they would be brought in at that time and then reset back down. The house would be secured and I believe it, the rest of the repairs for the house.
Um, when you were talking about the second option, um, you said something about, um, the historic. What were you, what did you mean by that or what, how is, um, explain what you meant by that?
Well, I'm, I'm not an expert per se in all the historical guidelines that are required for a structure like this and it might be that the, some of the interior framing must be maintained, that you could, for instance, let's say the back wall was bad and we wanted to remove it in the hole, put a new wall in its place and put the finishes back on. We're not sure yet whether or not that sort of option is, is realistic for the structure. Part of that research needs to be done.
I think what we're, what we're putting out is options that, you know, both have to be researched, both have to be cost options. And so to put those options out there is due diligence on our part.
Right.
Especially for the cost factors and the sustainability of the options. So on our part, it's just due diligence to throw all options out there so that you are aware that there is more than one option and that we have not researched completely both options.
Going back to my first question, my thought was that if we were to replace the foundation, build a new foundation there, somehow the, I presume the house is raised above it and so forth, but would it be more, assuming that there's problems with the soil or whatever it was that occurred? And I'm not talking about so much the cost, but the ease of doing it, would it be better to go, to go to another location and build a new foundation at another location where you are able to easily test whether the, you know, soils are compact enough and everything else for excavation and building a new foundation?
Yes, that, that's, I think, a matter of, of cost. If, if one has to purchase another piece of property, you have to.
I wasn't thinking around about that.
Or moving it, foundation, or how homes are lifted quite frequently in place and foundations put under them, so it's quite possible to do that and it's done all the time. I, I guess one would have to weigh the costs of moving it as opposed to leaving it there and just shoring it up. It, it is doable. One of the, one of the odd things that we kicked around was if there are indeed soil issues because of the foundation, well, maybe we just put a basement in it, lift it up, dig it out, put a basement, get down deep below where the problems are and then set it back down. I don't know an answer to that, because if you own the property, it maybe then is just a matter of the moving costs. So the, the moving costs would have to offset the shoring.
You mean not the, the.
Correct. That's a good point. We, that's one thing that has to be explored is whether or not it's going to be feasible to underpin this. Um, that's hard to say whether it's feasible until we really know what's going on.
And that's for the, the additional geotechnical work.
Correct.
And then I think we had estimated that.
To do a full study, it can be anywhere from 15 to 20, 25,000 to do a full extensive study. Um, we costed a relatively small study and it was close to 10. So I, I think if we're going to do it, we want to do it right, and that's what we're hoping to do, an expansive study that would exactly the issue that we're looking at.
So where, we, where we, where we're at is, um, we've, we've kind of reached this point where, um, So where, we, where we, where we're at is um, we've, we've kind of reached this point where um, Denise has done a lot of work and, and Mark um, reaching this point of the, the, where the evaluation has been done as far as it can be. And we wanted to um, basically, you know, check in and bring this to the commission at this point where we're at before we march forward in, in directions that we weren't certain that you would or wouldn't want us to go. Uh, because the next level of, of exploration, as, as you can kind of get a sense here, is going to be uh, probably we're going to get into some fairly good side costs just to, just to begin the next level of exploration, the, the geotechnical and then um, the re uh, repair options that Mr. Nelson talked about. His, his report is a, is an, is an analysis. It is not an, it's not a um, these are not engineered. He has not engineered the repairs. In other words, those, those would have to be, those would have to be engineered so that, so that you could take them to a contractor and say, please, please do these for us. And that's probably, you know, another, you know, ballparking it at this point, probably another twenty or so thousand dollars just to do that. Probably around another twenty thousand to do this next level geotech. Um, and then probably a few other odds and ends costs here that we'd have to do to complete this analysis. So just ballparking everything, I'd say next level analysis, depending on which, which way the commission wants to explore this is, you know, probably in the ballpark of about fifty thousand dollars, give or take. And again, I'm just using very rough estimates. Um, and I, I kind of jumping ahead just a little bit here and certainly if you had more questions for Mr. Nelson, we can, we can go back to those. But uh, we, we wanted to just, you know, do this checkpoint with you and, and tell you this is where we're at. Um, we, we, you know, obviously we're uh, we, this is not a good news report. I don't think you expected it to be. Um, the thing that surprised us, I think, the most is we, we know this is an old structure and I, I think it, the comments have been made several times. I've heard, I think we just talked about this again a little bit earlier. Uh, that uh, I think it was Dr. McLaughlin himself that said this, this house wasn't very well built, you know, when it was built. So somehow it's managed to be um, to stay, to stay upright for a hundred and close to seventy years or whatever it's been. Um, we uh, we didn't, we, we did expect that, you know, we knew there were some structural issues going on. What we didn't expect was the level of concern that we would find. And also uh, the speed at which things are changing uh, in, 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 in relation to what you see in structures. The, the fact that the foundation is, is moving, cracking as, you know, on a daily or weekly basis. And the wall issues, they, they, they continue to move in just this, just this period of time that we've been monitoring. So it's, it's uh, we, we are at a point of not just concern, but, but really probably kind of a crisis for deciding, wow, this is changing so rapidly, we can't just sit on it and, and just kind of, you know, we need to, we've really got to come to some, come to some decisions on this. And then the other, the other piece I wanted to touch on and, and uh, Ms. Fraser might want to jump in here too, but the um, the, the question that we wanted to put before the commission was um, as, as I reported to you, over the course of the last year, we explored uh, the partnership with the National Park Service of having them just take the house as part of kind of just a simple boundary expansion under the, the same, the Fort Vancouver unit, an, an extension of the McLaughlin House. Um, they came back and told us that that wasn't possible at this time because of funding. Uh, in, in essence, that would take an act of Congress to, to make that in, in addition to, to that unit. And so um, we've continued to kind of uh, explore that and, and we want to have the commission's permission to, to seek, you know, to seek that type of, of potential solution, uh, to explore other potential partnership opportunities that may exist or, you know, to, to try to kind of flush that out a little bit further. So we've got, we've really got kind of two things going here. We've got a, we've got to sort of deal with this on the immediate and then also we'd really like to have a long-term solution to this. And then finally, this is just to wrap up my comments before I just kind of stop and let you ask the questions you want to ask. Um, I didn't mention in my preliminary comments that we have engaged our, our city building department. They're very aware of what's going on. They've been very active and, and very helpful um, in uh, just helping us kind of keep, keep moving forward through this process. And um, as of now, they have not made a decision to red tag the building, which would mean effectively it's completely closed off. Right, right now with the decision that we've made, just, just for safety reasons is uh, for you knew and I, I, we made an announcement a couple of months ago that we closed that to the public um, for, for safety concerns and have continued to do that until such time that we, we can come to some remedy. But uh, um, anyway, that's kind of, those are sort of the loose end comments that I wanted to add in. David, I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to add about the other component?
Well, I think we need some direction uh, to someone here from the commission about how you feel because I think we should get, get on with the urgent matters that we needed to attend with on the house and then also explore the transfer and other partnerships we can with National Parks Service. And I'm ordering to do that as soon as the commission.
As well, Commissioner, as you see there.
I have a question regarding the analysis of the historic appropriateness of deconstruction, building a new frame and reattaching the architectural features on the outside of a new frame. Has that been vetted by Christine Robertson Gardner or the H R B?
Like you said, we haven't fully gone into how that works with um, SHIPO or the Historic Registry yet. It was a potential option on the engineering and structural side.
And I assume that's the less expensive option?
That is the less, less expensive option.
Do we know what the difference in cost would be between the two?
Uh, Mark has done some just really, really rough estimates. If we go with the, the newer construction system, we're looking at a really ballpark rough estimate of a hundred and fifty per square foot. Um, if we look at trying to retain the building and put those engineered fixes in, we're probably doubling that factor. So about three hundred per square foot.
From the building, Mark, you guys remember what is?
It's roughly two thousand one hundred square feet.
Two thousand one hundred square feet.
So what's the math on that for each option, Russell?
That, and that's construction only.
Right.
You'd have to add the.
But I assume the way you want to proceed is to examine both options in more detail?
I think that's where we're coming to you first is which direction do you want us to head? Because the, the money options are really significant and some of those front end pieces are.
I sent a text message just want to see if you got it. I'm almost ready to be on, so just find it.
I'm doing political strategy for the commission first. I noticed uh, uh, Commissioner Smithson after that, Commissioner Roberts.
Okay. Um, so I guess, you know, Mike's got feeling right now and, and, you know, we can't not think about money, but um, my point of view is going to be very um, specific and very um, adamant. Um, I don't mind looking at, you know, seeing what the options are, but this is the second oldest house in the state. This predates the McLaughlin House. If they wouldn't, you know, what, would, would, would we tear the siding off the McLaughlin House, rebuild it and plaster it back on? I don't know. Um, so I really want to, if it, if it all jeopardizes the, the historic aspects of that house, um, we, we can't go there. Um, and so I really, we need to ask that question. Um, this is a precious day why we, I don't want need to talk about how important the house is because we all know that. Um, and I know it's going to be expensive, but we've neglected it for years. And uh, way too long. And um, I don't care how much it costs, we're going to fix this house. And um, you know, I'll work however hard I can to help find the resources to other places and we need to do that. Um, but so one of my questions right now is, you know, even in the discussions that we noticed with, with national, national parks, um, and I said this almost a year ago, it could take a couple of years and it still could. Um, what are we going to do as a city right now to make sure that house doesn't fall down until then? Um, because putting barricades around it, um, because it's going to snow and we're just going to protect people from it falling over is not, not enough. And I know you guys have been working really hard, but what can we do now to make sure that that thing doesn't fall down? Because if it falls down in the next year or two, I don't know if I can forgive you. I, 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 you know, our, our, I mean, the city, we have an obligation to take care of this house. And I, you know, we have our own ordinances that we don't follow to save this house. And, you know, we have requirements from the state to save this house. We don't have a choice. So we're going to find out where the money's going to come from and we're going to fix it. And um, it's going to be hard, but we've neglected it for so long, we don't have a choice anymore. Um, and I just hope the house hangs on until we can save it. Because if it falls down, what can we do now to make sure it doesn't fall down? When it, uh, for the snow lands on it or when a windstorm comes or when, you know, someone walks by it? What, what can we do right now to make sure it doesn't collapse? And I, you know, I know we've put some bracing inside and stuff like that, but I don't know if that's enough because it sounds so bad. You know, we can't have more than a couple of people walking in the house. So is it, I mean, the house could sit there for another year or two before we even have the money to, to, to move it, fix it, deal with it. So how can we, how can we keep it from falling down first?
Um, I'll defer a little bit of this to, to Mark, but I just, I just wanted to address part of your question, uh, Commissioner, was um, we're just taking very, very cautious approaches here, just so you know. Just, just because we want to be safe versus sorry in terms of um, uh, protecting the public safety. So we're probably being a little overly cautious. Some of the things that you're seeing visibly um, are, are probably a, a, a little bit more, uh, just us making very, very certain that we're being very careful. And that's, that's just our job to do that. So, you know, I, I don't think the house is going to fall over tomorrow. I'll, I'll let Mark talk a little bit more about what can we do now or what have we done? We did the emergency shoring as soon as we discovered that. He, he immediately uh, identified, hey, you probably should do this or, and, and we did that right away. We didn't even wait. Um, and uh, the thing about the, the, the barricading around the house, we, we, the forecast was for some potential extreme snow event.
No, I'm glad.
We were just taking very cautious approaches. I don't, you know, I didn't really expect any, that, that anything severe was going to happen, but it was better to be safe and sorry just, and that was partly also a recommendation from our building department. So we just, we just followed that first action. So um, and then Mark, do you want to fill any of the, the gaps there or what? What else can we do immediately? What have we not done? Uh, maybe you can give the commissioners a little bit better perspective on. I think, I think you even made a comment to me recently that, you know, that the house in an existing condition could just stay there for a long time and nothing might happen. But then again, something could happen. So it's, it's kind of, you know.
Um, to comment on that, in, in the report, I, I broke down these issues into two different types of problems, the vertical load and the lateral load. The, the items that are identified as lateral load, they've always been there, right? That hasn't changed. There, but we have identified them and for us, they're a red flag that in the design seismic event, this building could be vulnerable and could fall. So one could wait on those. You're just playing this, the, the gambling game, right? We don't know if it will ever happen, right? So the seismic upgrades are, are voluntary for this. It's not mandated. So you could do those at any time. We're just pointing out as part of this and that, part of this analysis that we've identified some weaknesses. However, in the vertical load, some of those could potentially be safety issues. They, in the report, they were ranked in section four point one in the level of importance. And so one could decide, well, let's just do a couple of these or let's, let's, let's do items one through four and then we'll finish up on the other ones. I, I think you could take a step and do some of these. Um, we could help identify what would be a complete minimum if we had to, but I, I think that is an option. Um, I would say we need to get the soils report done because even the, I, I don't think shoring can be recommended until we know, right? What's going on down below because if we put shoring in, it's going to settle too and it could even cause more problems. So things paramount and find out what's going on below and then we could start tackling these items as inventory items. Um, I, I put them in, we put them in order of what we thought was most important relative to life safety. And, and I would say.
Go ahead.
We need to find out some of the soils and then let's make sure the floors are connected to the walls correctly for the vertical load on the first and second level. That maintains a minimum safety, life safety issue for vertical load. So the, things like that could be done in the interim. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Um, and just one last, like how, how um, Scott and Denise, how, how much um, with this report and moving and all that, how much did we spend?
I think all in all, having it right in front of me, I think all in all, we're close to about eighteen thousand dollars.
And where did that come from?
From, from our department, I'm glad you.
Uh huh.
We've just been up, using our operating funds. But these were things that were necessities. We had to, as I said, these are, these are things that we immediately identified that we had. We didn't, we didn't have time to wait and come ask the commission for, you know, commission or whatever. These are within our staff authority anyways. So, but uh, but you know, we've kind of reached that next threshold where we're starting to get into some, some bigger dollar amounts before we moved on, you know, we moved on.
So Commissioner, uh, Roberts next.
I have a two, two questions. One is I'm confused by your statement, they would have get on with moving this to the federal transfer or whatever. I thought that they didn't want it at this point.
Well, you know, somebody mentioned an act of Congress and Congress doesn't act if you don't ask them. So we're, we've started, started dialogue with them and I think we should push for that because I think that's sort of a long-term solution is to have that part of their inventory. But we have this urgent responsibility that I think we need to meet now. And I'm just trying to, well, I'm hearing from the, uh, commission so far and I don't want to read too much into this, but I didn't hear anybody objecting when Commissioner Smith said what he says. So my recommendation would be that we go forward right away and fix these urgent items, get the soils report and have the staff report back to you when we know more information on that as, as direction one. And number two, for us to go ahead and explore with Congressman Schrader and others, uh, the opportunity of amending um, a Fort Vancouver plan to include the property.
Okay. And my second um, concern was I, I agree with Rocky, you need to move ahead and do the um, soils report, those things very, very quickly. I am not adverse at all to uh, taking the architectural structure pieces off and rebuilding. I've seen some things done lately um, that look very nice. You can't tell that those things aren't the original buildings. You know, because you do preserve what's there and put it back, so.
If I could add one comment, when we were talking about cost, if we take a segment of these out and piecemeal it, I think that if we ran the cost, we would find over time that that is going to be more expensive than doing it all at once because they're already in there doing this and while they're there, they're doing that. And, and we could do this, I just want to bring that up, that um, it tends to be more cost effective to do as many of these together at once.
Well, I, I noticed you're, you're going to run up on the one and the, Mr. Did you? Okay, Commissioner, this either.
Just a quick question, how close is Singer Creek where it runs underground to the foundation of, of the Olympic Center?
If you look directly across the street towards the plane here, it runs right under that sidewalk.
That's quite close.
It's very close. It actually is in a, a box culvert. It's um, what is that, the salt, brick and mortar system.
You're saying that could be a causal source of.
So you're thinking that could be a possible source of, of the soil problem?
The saturations are leaked in the, in the, in the aging box culvert system, I think. Right.
I just want, I'm gonna throw this open to the questions from, from the visitors here. Uh, the reason why you mentioned moving it to the site. The city actually owns the property where the McGlocklin House and the, and the Barclay House is located. National Park Service has given an easement, uh, for their, uh, for the McGlocklin House and the Barclay House. There would probably be room there to move the Irma Tinger if, if we so desired. I'm not suggesting that we should, but it was an alternative, especially if there are those kinds of soil concerns that come up in the process. I know some hands in the, uh, guest, I'm gonna ask the other people, uh, at the table. Uh, uh, you're, you're representing? The city here, or did you, or you're coming here as a member of, uh, planning commission?
I didn't.
This is, this is.
Well, I, yeah, I thought I would listen, sit and listen, um, to all the things that are going on here today. And I certainly don't want to tell you how to do your business, but. Um, I don't know if you looked at outside sources for funding, like the Kinsman Foundation, Meyer Memorial Trusts. National Trust. Um, the, um, University of Oregon also has a program whereby they. Have students under the tutelage of, uh, learned professionals to rebuild, do these kinds of projects. But the only problem is you have to have about a year lag period. You know, entering into these. And, um, uh, from my experience of writing grants and doing that kind of thing. Uh, it's a pretty much a full-time job, just maintaining and keeping track of multiple grants for fairly small amount of money, so. Something to consider, I don't know if you're. Where you're gonna go with it.
We've definitely looked into our potential outside funding sources and, um. I don't know if we've looked at every one of those specifics that you just mentioned, but, um. The, the challenge that we've met is, one, we either don't qualify because we're a government. Unfortunately, that precludes you from certain types of historical grants. And the second challenges that we've run into are the, the, the amounts of each grant are, are so low that. You know, we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars, and one grant might be ten thousand, one might be. Six, one might, you know, and you're looking at your, your two staff people here who do. A, a multitude of many, many, many things, and we're trying to manage it, so it's, uh. Yeah, we're just looking for a big bucket of money somehow, but we haven't discovered that. But no, we have, in, in all seriousness, we've been looking, and we're continuing to work with our partners, the Park Service and others, that might point us in some funding direction, so we'll keep, we'll keep turning over rocks.
Commissioner. Um, because this is raised, been raised to a contingency, I'm gonna raise, bring up as an idea, um, that I raised early on in my term as commissioner. And I don't know if it'll go anywhere, but I just want all possibilities considered. One potential source of money for the Irma Tinger House is the Federal Historic Investment Tax Credit. That is based on a private investment. There's a twenty percent investment tax credit, and I think there's, um, something analogous, uh, in Oregon. And if there were some, some way to do it, and I don't know if it would be possible, but I'm just raising it as another thing to explore, to enter in some. Some kind of public-private partnership where a private entity would help in the redevelopment. Of the Irma Tinger House and capture that twenty percent investment tax credit for a bed and breakfast or whatever. Um, that would be, I mean, it's certainly eligible because it's on the National Register, and that's the criteria for being eligible for those tax credits. If that type of public-private partnership could be brought to bear on the Irma Tinger House, that twenty percent investment tax credit would be another source. Of potential funding for a big-ticket renovation like this.
Any questions from, uh, Paul or?
I just for the record, um, Paul Edgar. I rebuilt an eighteen eighty house of identical construction completely. I lifted it off the foundation, went through all of the stuff. Uh, probably myself and maybe Dan Fowler are the only two people that really have physically done it one hundred percent. And I did it so that the house could totally comply with the National Register. And I did it, uh, under the processes of historic review. Uh, it could be done, and I didn't do it spending six hundred thousand dollars. Uh, I put a whole new foundation virtually into my house. Added on to it. Uh, put a, basically a stable level, fully engineered first floor, and then set the house back down on it. And, and did it saving it one hundred percent. Some of the windows I didn't have to worry, even worry about taking it out. Why I'm saying this is this, I'm willing, as a citizen who cares about historic preservation. To help in this process, because, one, I've done it, and I don't think anyone else here, other than Dan, has done it. I've done every step of it, I understand what you do and how do you do it. Uh, I think that there could be some value, and, uh, I would do it free. Uh, as part of my, uh, obligation to the city. But, uh, that's something that's up to you guys, uh. But I know, uh, uh, this can be done for a whole lot less money and do it right. And I had my house one hundred percent engineered, because I had to have it done to meet all the current building codes. And it did. And the total engineering bill, bill to have it done was not even close to what you're talking about. So, uh, if you care to, uh, reach into your community, uh, I'm available, thank you.
Mayor, thanks for the. Yes.
Just in this response, um, there's residential, and then there's public facilities. So there is a difference in what Mr. Edgar is talking about versus what we're having to comply with. Um, yes, there are some abilities to reduce those costs, if you have volunteers, if you have some other, um. Areas, R D O is in place to view a focal factor. And so, you know, we can always come back and knock those points to different degrees based on our resources. So we have to give a, a full picture, and then we can come back and take care of some of those detail items in local groups when we have some of those resources available.
And, and Mayor, in that same, in that same vein, I believe the commission's direct into us earlier was to make sure that any repairs you do do are consistent with what the National Park Service would want. Uh, in their restoration, which may be a little bit different level than, than for residential. Um, so with that, this, the purpose of this tonight was to give the commission a report, and then for us to go forward and make these other repairs, and then come back to you again with our progress. Um, I'm just, I have a question regarding some, uh, funding source, or perhaps a geotech, or one of those other studies. Uh, you've heard me in the past jump on, uh, our park program for, for, for the grants. But this is a different situation, you're not funding a program. I don't know if the old C C I T grants have closed in terms of proposals coming, does anybody know?
I think it was March first.
Yeah, so that has closed, okay. Um.
Can the, can the trustees of the O C C I T waive that at that point?
I guess where the trustees.
I don't know, they asked you that question.
Yeah. That's a question that you could research before next commission, because we're not positioned to make any decisions, but we won't, won't tell the budget, but. Uh, given the situation, the vigorous situation, I'm just wondering if, uh.
See, I, I'm getting that. Mission creep, because what, what I need, what we need to ask you is what do you need from? What is the budgeted fund you need to proceed right now to do that soils test? And we're not gonna be waiting for, uh, amendment to the bylaws or anything else, we just need to go get it done, I guess.
If I wanted to really just cover, cover ourselves, I'd say, uh, uh, a blessing of, of spending probably up to twenty-five thousand dollars from our contingency fund.
Right.
Until such time that we discover that we could pay that source back with another revenue, or that, that money back with another revenue, revenue store, so. And, and again, it's a little bit of a ballpark, but I, I would say up to twenty-five thousand immediately, just for the geotech report, is probably what we need your blessing for.
I think this is a contiguous.
Yeah, that's where I'm at, I was there twenty minutes. It's so obvious what we need to do.
Well, but our decision at the commission meeting, next to mission then.
Yeah.
And what, what if you need it for?
If we need it, yeah, I'm not sure we need it for twenty-five thousand, but I just wanted to.
Just to make sure we're covered, and hopefully we'll underspend that.
Okay. And then we'll look at, I'm, I'm not sure how much O C C I T has left, and that brings up a whole bunch of other issues about what other people are gonna think if they were counting on resources, so. It all comes out of our, it all comes back to us anyway, I guess, ultimately, how are we able to money, it comes back into city's resources.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. We'll, we'll continue to give you our progress reports.
Now, the next item on the agenda is Main Street circulation plan update, uh, from, uh, Patrick Fattar.
Okay, well, Lloyd Purdy and I are going to, we have fifteen minutes to make a presentation update you on the progress we made on Main Street projects, projects with S. And, um, I'm gonna walk you through what you have at your place. There are a few of these extras laying around, I think, that are just wanted, but not enough to, uh, everybody get it covered. Anybody want to copy? So, the Main Street sidewalk project goes back way further than probably a lot of you imagined. Um, when they were developing the downtown renewal plan years and years ago, I don't even remember which version it was. There was a project in there for the Main Street sidewalks and the streetscape. And in the mid nineties, they, um, we actually did one block of it, and then there wasn't enough money to do anything else. And there hasn't been enough tax enforcement in the downtown for years and years and years and years, and there isn't still enough, um, for the Main Street sidewalk project, so. But when the, when the Main Street program started, there was really, um, some of our attention elevated to the condition of the downtown. And when we were managing, of course, we had someone who could actively pursue, to help make Main Street look better and better and better. And, um, and then would be. And first of all, I'll pull you to this as an element that I'm using to get through this program. Um, we went to, when the arch bridge closed, um, you'll see that there are many, many, there are many, many, studies into the, 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 it's not open very easily. Because of the arch bridge closure, and because Lloyd being available to help us out with, um, carrying some of these projects and studies along. And. Then O D A decided that they really wanted to make sure that they had made every effort possible to help our downtown, should there be any fallout from the bridge closure. Um, and they, uh, first gave us the small amount of money for the supermation study. Which resulted in recommendations for turning Main Street back to two ways. And we also applied for a, a pedestrian bicycle grant from O D A, which was the first one we'd ever received. We applied in the past, but this was the first we received, and it's about twenty-sixty-six thousand dollars to approve the intersection at Tenth and Main. This is another thing that when Lloyd came to town, we started, um, blocking Main Street frequently, and hearing from the Main Street property owners and businesses more and more. About, yeah, that intersection really is bad hub, it's terrible for pedestrians, because you're gonna have to go up and down there. And it just, it's ugly, it's not what you'd say, can't you do something? And so fortunately, we got the grant, the bike ride grant from O D A, to do something at an intersection. Then, a few months later, um, we, we've got more money from O D A, we've got the one point oh seven million dollars for the Main Street sidewalks. We got the hundred and, or the two hundred and eight thousand dollars for the near-term circulation improvements. And then most recently, we got another nine hundred thousand dollars from the flexible funds program. So we are armed now to do the. Pedestrian improvements at Tenth and Main, the sidewalks and illumination between Fifth and, and. The, um, pedestrian enhanced intersection at the bottom of Rover and the elevator, and, um. Getting it, and a post to it. So, since we're kind of short on time. We're just gonna quickly go through the handout, and you have all the materials you possibly need to really want to study them. To understand in more detail what's going on, and you can do that up your ledger. What we tried to do is make it as. Uh, clear as possible, because there's quite a bit of confusion over the various different projects, different schedules, different possible money, et cetera. And so we've broken it down, and what you're gonna see in the next two years downtown is three projects. The first one is returning Main Street to Two Way Street. And, um. That is depicted. In these two handouts. Yes. One of them shows the near-term projects, which are gonna be happening in the next three months. And the other one is follow-up projects when the bridge reopens in twenty thirteen. And that's, oh, and what I did want to mention there is, for the first near-term project, the duration is about four to six weeks support. And the items that are going to be included in that are listed in the handout, and the construction start is April ninth of this year. Project two is the, um, Tenth and Main Street pedestrian improvements project. What you're going to end up seeing down there is a table intersection. And that is most. Uh, depicted in detail on this thing, handout sheet. And that's why the handout sheet was used in our grant application, so it's, it's, I'm saying it's conceptual. But what, what's important about it is you'll be seeing a table intersection at Tenth and Main, which is. I've seen no better way to, uh, call attention to an intersection where motorists realize they're coming to an area where pedestrians are supposed to dominate. And it slows traffic, even if the supply is not slow, slow traffic regardless, nobody's gonna go zooming through this field intersection. Um. Yeah, you're right, and the details of that are also listed in your handout under project two.
Table intersections, the blockways on the table are same levels sometimes.
That's correct. And there's a small rain guard in that, in that project.
Are there any green boxes in this intersection?
Yeah.
No, green box.
No green boxes. We, what we're going to be, um, installing on Main Street are arrows. Which is basically telling the bicycles and the motorists that we are sharing the lane now. So it tells, it tells both the pedestrian and the motorists where, where they lie in terms of where it's supposed to be on the street.
Absolutely, because I think, I feel screen boxes are very effective.
I don't think we have the volumes to, um, the green boxes are more for if you have heavy traffic stopping. With, with multiple, multi-main intersections, and we have basically two ways. Um, if we find it, we have masses of bikes suddenly competing with cars before they stop, so we could look at that. But, um, those are used, also often tend to be used in more civilized intersections. So at this point, we feel like the arrows are, um, appropriate for the volumes we have.
No room, no dedicated right way for, dedicated bike lanes?
No, you don't care about the green in town.
All right, all right.
And, and. Project three is, um, fifth and tenth street sidewalk and elimination. Um, I think everybody knows why we need new sidewalks downtown, we also have a bunch of sidewalks downtown, and they're perfectly okay. We worked at the very beginning about doing, just replacing every sidewalk downtown, we thought, I mean, this doesn't feel right. Why don't we use what we still have because it had content, and then replace the ones that are crumbling, uh, or that aren't there, it's a, it's a funnier place. So this, um, on your big sheet. This shows, um, all the sidewalk replacement, where the sidewalks will not be replaced as well. And, um, it also, on this drawing, it shows where the near-term improvements start, it's showing where the bulbarts are going to change for the two-way traffic project as well. It shows a lot, but you have to sit down and study it. And then. The other things that you'll be seeing down there are parking meter changes right away with the near-term, uh. How many blocks have we been doing with the parking meters for the two-way? Twelve blocks, a few blocks? Twelve blocks, okay. On twelve blocks, between. Fourth, or sixth and ninth, okay, between sixth and ninth. The other thing that, uh, I've mentioned quickly, one of the items that we're concerned about would be Tenth and Main intersection project is getting it built. You know, it's a great idea and it's gonna look really cool when we're done and it's gonna be really, aesthetically, a much, much nicer entrance when you come up to Main and I need downtown. But, uh, it is difficult to construct a table intersection with concrete, uh, in the middle of a very, very busy intersection. So our project team is working on making sure we can figure out a way to do traffic control. Or we've got some sort of mobility through the intersection. There'll be a lot of night work done, but we still have to be curing. And we're looking at options for other agency. Tom Lewis did a, one of these and I guess we're running with there. So there are ways to do it, but we've got, I just wanna make sure you know that that's something that is of great concern to us. We're not like. So, um, and then the other thing which we presented, we had our meeting on Friday with the downtown folks and now we just want to meet and we'll come by, we're convincing that floor meeting and do a fifteen minute presentation. Eric's put together, Eric Borgin, who's the project manager on this, uh, he's put together a schedule of all the activities in downtown Oregon City over the lifetime of the construction projects. And this is something else that we have to be very, work really closely with all the organizers and activities down there and making sure that whatever we're doing down there, all the fronts that can still be going on too. It's not very perfect though, I mean, it is constructed, but, um, we're, we're gonna be doing our best and our contractor's gonna have, um, real specific instructions, um, making sure we're dealing with all of the businesses, et cetera. So last, let's see.
Do you have, are you very afraid those keep on there?
Yes. Oh, yes. Um, last here is the lighting improvements. And we did a fair amount of research and I have to thank Karen Lori, who's, I think, one of our very good historians in town. She's giving a great picture library. Thanks, Karen. She looked into, um, what she has from records to see what streetlights we have downtown over the years. And, um, this is, we won't, we won't, come on.
It's very, it appears not to shine up at the sun.
Okay, so we found pictures in the nineteen twenties, which really are similar to what we have out there today. And, um, then you'll see that as we moved into the fifties, we went to the good old Cobra Head. And I'm kind of guessing that's not the historic picture you wanna see down there.
I hope not.
So here's another good picture of the twenties photo. I think that, uh, are the twenties slides. And I have a feeling that when they put the street tags down there that were installed in the eighties and then again, one little block in the nineties, um, that they used this photo. And, um, so what we've come up with for this, um, what we've come up with for downtown at this point, we've got two new, two new critical factors to deal with with streetlights. One is, um, one is that we're going to be using LED, which is, uh, much more energy efficient fixtures, lower maintenance, et cetera. And when we got the flexible funds, one of the, one of the things that we're looking for, where projects have had, we're, we're trying to use, um, more energy efficient type approaches, technology. And then the other thing we have to deal with today is the dark skies. And one of the last installations where we put in the open globes, we got another round of criticism for, wait a minute, I thought we were playing the dark side. So we talked to several different suppliers about, um, what they recommend that would most closely align with the older lights that have been down there. And they recommended these old town fixture. It basically has the same shape or very close to similar shape to the clear, to the clear one, but it has the black shield to keep the night skies in. Um, and it keeps night skies. And also you can use this with LED. There are a lot of LED, you can't really, LED really isn't, um, it's doesn't, it's not very compatible with the open, it's old. So, um, we also happen to have, when we were down in Main Street the other night, we actually had a couple of different, the other morning, we had a couple of different choices. But I think we only brought this one because this is kind of like the big, everybody likes this light, which was kind of terrific that it matched what we've had before. And then all this work we've done, it's made by Sternberg and Sternberg actually installed the lights in downtown Oregon City in the eighties. And they have a picture of their old eighties paddle on, you know? And it is the most similar except with this has a black cap, so to address the night skies. Um, yeah, all right. And then we also gave them two choices on the pole and they preferred this pole. So we were gonna go with this one. So you, you have these in different parts of town as well. So that, um, concludes the memo that we prepared for you. And, um, just, Lori, do you have anything you wanna add?
Well, I was in, I was in other cities trying to find out how to get funding like this and I won't, I won't, I don't care, but, um.
They need an arch bridge closing.
Um, speaking of the bridge, um, the bridge for the most part has lights that are fixed to the spires of the bridge. But I don't, I'm trying to remember if there's pole lights that are gonna be installed on the bridge as well. And how does the lights downtown fit with the bridge lights? It's the same time period, but, um, if, if there's pole lights going on the bridge, we may wanna make sure they, they look.
Yeah, I, I'll look into that. I don't, I don't believe there are. We'll look at those. And I don't, I don't think there are any pole lights, but we'll.
I don't think so either. I think they're just on the spire, but I'm not sure. Okay. Um, and the other thing is we will be removing the ones at Liberty Plaza, I hope, right? And replacing them with those?
Yes.
Thank you.
I just have a question on the, um, the one, the Sternberg lights that were, um, installed in the nineteen eighties.
Yes.
Are they, are they, do they have the light going up?
Yes.
That's the question I had. To make everything consistent, is it possible to replace the caps on the nineteen eighties lights so that they're consistent with what?
Yeah, we're gonna do a wholesale replacement, because what we ran into was tearing up the sidewalks, some of those have old foundations that don't meet today's structural standards. And so, um, we'll be reusing them and we'll be hauling them off to the, our facility and use them around times we can. But we thought for this project, we would do a wholesale replacement, all go to LED, in that's just importance, have all their like, be consistent and sort of do all of the processes. Yeah.
Is the follow-up, we're gonna reuse them, we should reuse them, any fine caps to put on?
Pardon?
Where we reuse them, any fine caps to put on? So the light doesn't.
Well, those are more, uh, those are more, uh, compatible with these reflector things that we put in the, um, holes. And John, I don't know, do you wanna add anything about that? We've got them on MoLala and.
And we have the bulb light, instead of a black cap on them, we use the, uh, the, uh, the side of the bulb, so you don't have the dark sky issue. That's, this is true for that. It doesn't, it wouldn't, you know, obviously you have a lot of these, the black cap, if you wanna go with someone, but it's not much, um, on the, it's, and that may be part of.
Right.
I just have a question, personal question. Do the temporary patches downstairs mean on the sidewalks?
That's where we've done, had to do utility repairs. And the, when they did the, the one block of, um, streetscape back in nineteen ninety-five, they used this thing called Bowmanite, which is basically concrete that you stamp to make it look like a brick. And when you go in and you have to do a utility cut or any kind of improvement underneath that, it's very difficult to match it, to replace it. So to have it look good on the corners, you have to redo all of the Bowmanite. We haven't really been very thrilled with that whole product. And so we have asphalt patches down there for a while and that got in a lot of trouble for that. And then we instead, we tried to do a really nice job with nice finished concrete and just call it a temporary patch. So people will know it's a temporary patch. And then of course, all that'll be gone when we redo the sidewalks. Yeah, thanks.
Um, what's the plan for numbering poles?
Well, the plan for numbering poles is in limbo right now. I know that John's street, um, crew and division is working on.
It's a great thing to do.
Yes, they're working on a new approach and when they have their new approach ready to present to me, they're going to do that. So we're working on getting rid of the old numbers we didn't like and, yeah. Thank you for your patience with that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Isn't that, you've got plenty of stuff to look at and if you have any questions, just don't hesitate to call me and, um, I'll tell you any.
Uh, yeah, so we'll go ahead and take a break. Uh, I'll make a fifty minutes for this. We need to have, uh, uh, hold up, uh, is it, uh, Jim, is that right? From the Dugger Oregon Cities to Venus.
Good luck.
Uh, just a little bit about myself, friends of Kenny Nessler and the member justice director of the Lee Street Cities. And I do these council trainings around the state. We have a, a training program and I've been training through that. But the individual council training, I trained about seventy cities around the state in the last five years. So, um, getting pretty good, as I think, my voice will laugh. Um, I have had city positions of assistant city manager, finance director, human resources director, economic development director. So I've done a whole gamut of city functions before I went to work for the league. And I will be there nine years in September. So, um, thank you for inviting me here. Uh, before we start, a couple of things, this, you'll get a lot more out of this training if, if you feel free to ask questions as we're going through. I, it's a lot more fun for me that way if we have a question and answer and you get a lot more out of the training. So I don't have to just be a talking head up here. So please feel free to ask questions as you go through. And, uh, if I'm going too fast, if you saw this, I don't need to speed up or slow down. I'm gonna try and get done in two and a half hours, but I'm here as long as you need me. So if you have questions that you're willing, I'm willing, we'll get through as, as quickly as we can. So. And if you don't have questions, we'll probably get free a message in a half hour. But it might be a slightly fun place. So. With that, if, if you could go around, introduce yourself, sign up who else in the room and kind of, if you can say what your role is of the city, how long you've been in your position or on your commission or on your board. That'll help me in, in answering questions and knowing who has to line the dress.
I'm the stewardess Nancy Crusher, I'm the, you're just coming on the table?
I'm Howard Jordan, uh, community commissioner, I've been in the city for going on seven years. I'm Paul Aker, I'm the audio guy, heard me over measures.
I'm Debbie Mum and I'm a new city commissioner and as general.
Um, Rocky Smith and I have been on the commission for two years.
Um, Doug Yan, the mayor, and I was on commission for a long, long as you were.
And James Nacita, I'm the commission president and I've also been on the commission for two years.
Kathy Roth, commissioner, too much. I can.
David Frasier, city manager for eleven months.
So I can turn you to the finance commissioner in January.
I'm Marvin Cole, library director of the Oregon City District.
Paul Speed, I'm a city finance commissioner since January.
I'm Charlie, Charlie director, I've been with the city for, uh, three years in June.
Well, Nancy Ives is gonna come to fill, eight?
I'm Nancy Ives, the city recorder here in Oregon City.
All of the data room?
Well, thank you. So a little bit about myself, I live in Surrenton, so it's not a very long drive to get here. And, uh, I helped, I was on there for the city commission when they developed their urban area district and I'd also managed to urban area district, so I was in town also. I've been there with that too. So if you have questions as we go through, my sister lives around the corner in the McGalton district, so I come here all the time.
I don't know, you served on the city commission, but our former assistant city manager was.
He and I were the finalists for the job. When we were moving up here, I still wanted to live in the dorms because I'm, I'm all of it, so. Uh, Delve's my neighbor, who lives right below me. Uh, good friend of mine. Okay, with that, I kinda wanted to give just a brief overview of what we'll be discussing tonight and a little overview if I sit down, I don't know, partway through, okay. This, I'm over pneumonia, so, so I might sit down partway. Um, so I'm gonna kind of do a golf and overview of this thing. And we'll talk about your basis of power, where your power as council comes from. What, what standard there is, what the limits are, kind of what your role is there. The roles and differences and responsibilities between the council, the boards and commissions, is now what your different roles are, what your responsibilities in those roles are. Talking about, um, the political process, your, the, the traits or the elements of an effective council, how you can be effective, work together as a council or a board or commission. Some elements, the elements of effective teams and every time you have a new, a new person entering the team, you enter a whole new dynamic of team building. And you have to get adjusted as a team. Uh, good public policy, things that you should consider as you're making public policy, how you can make the meetings work better together. Um, we have a section in here on ethics. We have Oregon ethics laws and ethics, ethical leadership in general, uh, some problem solving things. I also have public records and public meetings information in here, which applies to all of you, whether you're on the city council or on a subcommittee or advisory board or any kind of commission that, that has a role with the city. And some common mistakes, some executive session information in here. And then I, um, also have information on your specific charter, what your charter says. It's got the general information, then we'll look at what your charter says specifically, meaning words, saying about your commission. And then, um, you don't have specific council rules, but you have some chapters in there that put that on council, um, behavior and how council is that. So I've got information on that. So that you have the general rough overview and then what it, how it applies to you here in Oregon City. And then I have the next, what's next piece? I don't know if you have council goals or strategic plan as a proof or if you're getting ready to redo that, but that would be the next step. Some reasons to have a training like this is that, um, important decisions don't make, don't wait. So as you're a new person on the city council, if you're elected and everybody expects you to be an expert immediately and start making those tough decisions and you just kind of get thrown into the fire. So if you can have training like this early on, that helps you with knowing your role and how that works. Um, it can help you to be a, become an effective member of the team and you can all, then you all have the same information. We've all discussed together how, what your role is, how you interact, um, the rules of the game, basically on how you make decisions together as a group. And, um, it's an opportunity to grow into the job by doing that. And, um, so legal responsibilities that come with being a city council or planning division or urban role board member. And this, uh, by being trained, it helps you to prepare to take on those responsibilities. Also helps you learn areas where you need additional information and additional training. So our first basis of power comes, uh, goes to federal and state laws, uh, are the overarching laws that affect cities. Uh, cities are local. Uh, cities or local, or local governments are basically subdivisions of the state. Uh, and are subject to federal restrictions, I mean, state laws. The state constitution has laws that oversee cities and then the statutes and the cities of the courts also affect cities. Charters and ordinances are, are the documents within the cities or your charters, basically your document of incorporation, which says how you operate as a city and what your powers are. So the charters and ordinances, ordinances are the laws that we pass to everyone, the citizens who are elected to do that. So, uh, charters and ordinances are your local control laws. But they cannot conflict with the federal laws, the state constitution, criminal law. So you have some parameters by which you can make that a local ordinance. You can't make a local ordinance that would go against the federal or state. It's like the state law on assisted suicide, you know, then you look at the federal law which helps the state law and, um, that's kind of how the state law comes, city law. Uh, so the ability for cities to govern themselves and have home rule authority or to govern how things occur in their community is in the state constitution, it's in Article 12, Section 2. I'm not gonna read it to you, but this is where you are given that authority based on the state constitution. So there are powers that cities have and, um, that, that are reset to you through that state constitution. You have the power to purchase and acquire property. Um, it also gives you condemnation power. If you need to acquire property for public purpose, then you do have that ability, which should be used sparingly unless, you wouldn't wanna go out there if you don't really need it for public purpose. Because it's not a fun process. And this one of the things that citizens misunderstand at times, they hear the word condemnation, which makes them think you're just gonna take their property. But there, there are books of laws that apply to condemnation. And you have to give whoever the property owner is a fair market value for their property if you do take it through condemnation. You have the, uh, the need to employ people to carry out the work of the city. You have the power to staff, which is the property taxes, uh, although it's been lifted by the state. You have the power to contact on behalf of the citizens. You can enter into public contracts or contracts on behalf of your, of your constituents. And then you have the power to regulate people, which is through your ordinances and your police powers. So, um, this is just, uh, through the legislature, when they've set up home rule. Um, before cities have gotten their own charter, they've done home rule. They give powers to cities which are regulate private lands, which is own, they, uh, the condemnation and then construction and management of public facilities, which is your utilities, like your water and your sewer. I can't go loud, sorry. Water and sewage, some of your parks, some of your streets and roads that I agree. So the first thing is current hearings and records. And, um, these are just general overview and public meetings laws. The public has the right to, um, attend. They don't have the right to participate in every discussion that you have. Um, but they can't let the public participate, but, but there are times when the council doesn't be able to discuss about that participation. Um, but you do, they, you do need to make the decisions and have those discussions in public. That applies to form of the governing body, um, of a public body. So if you have a subcommittee of three, that applies to any time two of that subcommittee need to talk about that topic because they're on the subcommittee. It applies to your, um, your planning commission and applies to your library board, to any of those other bodies that are assigned by the city, whether they're elected to it or appointed official. It does apply. So when you have a staff, when the staff have a staff meeting, but, but when you're advising the council towards a decision, then you do have to call the public meetings laws. Um, that can apply to social gatherings though, so maybe you have a, uh, one of your technical area and you wanna invite the council to the meeting and it's a social gathering. As long as you aren't talking about city business, you can all be there and it's not a crime, it's not a need a public need. Uh, but you do have to be very careful to make sure that you don't start. It's deliberate when you're together, not start that city business. You need to make sure you're not deliberating for the decision or then you are going to get called to the meeting.
I'm gonna ask a question at this point. We, we go to a public meeting, well, if it was more, if you're more of a stair, as long as you're not participating in any discussion, you still can attend the public meetings.
Yeah, and the topic of the public meeting is probably not city business. I mean, something that you might can fall over as a councilor. So you don't have the right to be there, but you can't be deliberating for the city decision as a form of the council. So you start to be aware of the public perception. Uh, I've been in communities several times where, where the question comes up, you know, a form of the council, they get together every Thursday morning and they have coffee in the coffee shop. They don't know the sound of the meeting and, you know, but the council will say, we're not talking city business, but the guy you guys don't believe that. You know, even though technically you may not be having a public meeting, you really need to be aware of the public perception and, and avoid even the perception of doing something in a public meeting.
I have a question too.
Okay.
Okay, so let's say there's a meeting, uh, okay, so Seymour Conster holding the government economic, uh, uh, meeting. And it is on a topic that will be discussed at the city level. Is that okay that there's three or more?
I would say it's okay that I would err on the side of caution and just put out a notice that a, a form of the council is likely to, to attend this meeting and they won't be running the meeting, they won't be deliberating, but the forum will be available, will be there, and that's a public meeting too. I, I always recommend that you err on the side of caution, I think you're trying to hopefully with that.
Probably again, but then, then that kicks in, if you, if you're having a, a public meeting and reactive recorded or minutes or, or, or use something.
I, I would do that, that meeting they would be taking minutes, but the city would have to have control over them.
So it is enough to deliberate.
It's easy enough to deliberate, yeah. But, but, you know, if there's something wrong with being up front, that a form of the council might be there and it's not a meeting, but they might be there.
It's funny, uh, emails, uh, is it, we're in a new world.
And I have a little section on that. And actually, uh, in the materials I passed out, um, we, you know, my presentation was put together before we just started this meeting by the state of Oregon on meetings via email. And so I put an article that we just put together for our Local Focus Magazine on lessons from Rain County. And there was a state, a case with in Oregon that just was decided in the last, I don't know, weeks about years, year, email. So I put that in here, I just handed it out as, uh, it always comes up. So that's something I'll be very careful of. Okay, meetings via telephone, building meeting of a governing body, of public body, which is held through the use of telephone or electronic communications is subject to the public meetings laws. So even if you're all sitting at your homes, not in the same room together, but you're on conference call, that's a public meeting if, if the form of you are present and you're deliberating on city business. And there's, you have to have someone on the phone for a meeting, but you have to make it available to the public, which would mean the public would need to be able to call into that conference call. You have ten minutes that, that have had prior recorder. Um, and, and so the public has to have on two weeks' reserve and it needs to be noticed ahead of time, at least twenty-four hours. So it is, I would say just don't, don't do it. However, we used to have on my council, a, a snowbird, there was a councilor. And during his, uh, um, the winter, when he was gone for a couple months, he would phone in to our council meetings, he'd be on the speakerphone so that the people in the audience would hear his comments, they could hear his vote, he could be in the minutes. And that was okay, that's legal, he doesn't have to physically be in the room. But it, this public does have to be able to, to view his, his comments and be covered. So that doesn't mean you can all become snowbirds. I wanna be a snowbird someday. Um, okay, so legal requirements for public meetings, you need to get, uh, notice beforehand, which is, uh, determined by the public meetings laws to be at least twenty-four hours' notice to the media and to people who said they want notice of your meeting. Um, and then you have places around town, you need to post that you're going to hold a meeting. So at least twenty-four hours in advance unless it's an emergency. Well, the location has to be accessible to, to the disabled. So say you have a subcommittee of three and you wanna meet at someone's house, still have to notice it. If you are in one of these older houses where you have twenty steps to get up to your front door, you can probably have your meeting there because the public can't get in, a, a disabled person won't be able to get in. You do have to make sure it's, um, accessible and you have to have minutes for those subcommittee meetings. You have ten minutes for the urban role committee meetings or the funding missions. Doesn't mean they have to be verbatim, you don't have to transcribe everything that's been said, but you have kind of summary of information, the recorder has to have those. Um, you can get those rehearsed, you can take care of those factors. So those things you need to do when you do have a public meeting. So executive sessions, there's a lot of questions on executive sessions. And it's okay, I meet with councilors all the time and say, oh, oh, we didn't take minutes. You, you just, now, you know, I, I'm not saying you ever did, but now you know, anytime you meet, you need to have minutes. Uh, I have an article also on unscheduled executive sessions. We get questions through our legal services program all the time. People calling and saying, something just came up and the meeting starts in an hour and we wanna have an executive session, but we haven't noticed it. So, uh, article for our newsletter, which will be coming out, um, in a couple days. But I asked Denver Copy with anything, so I did read it to you tonight and it's talking about unscheduled executive sessions. There are times when you can do that. Um, if they're described here in this, in this, um, article and I just wanna make sure you know. But there are some patterns you have to have, there are, there are specific executive sessions. Say if you're talking about an employee, for example, um, for evaluation of this one, discharge or anything like that, you have to give the employee notice and they have the opportunity to choose whether it's in a public meeting or an executive session. So you have to give them enough notice to take a made that choice and then you have to be open to the meeting. So, um, there are times when you wouldn't be able to do that, but if something comes up at the meeting, in a public meeting, um, you just have to make, uh, your best efforts to make sure that, that happens, anything that is public, it's city stuff. So, um, I'll leave you to just sort of look at that, but. Um, so there are eight areas of, there are fourteen categories of executive session. Eight apply to cities, so I thought I'd go through those. So the first area that you can go into executive session for in a city is to consider employment of an officer or an employee. But there are some things that have to have done before you can do that in an executive session. You have to advertise the vacancy. You have to have a regular hiring procedure, so you have to have like a personnel manual. Um, public desks have the opportunity to comment on the employment of the officer. What we do and we're handling the recruitment is that we make sure that the council adopts and discusses at a public meeting the car file of what they're looking for in, uh, that city manager, for example. So you, you say what your ideal candidate would look like, how you, that criteria you're gonna evaluate the person, what criteria you're gonna use, you adopt that in a public meeting, allow the public to comment on that and then you can hold the interviews and review the applications in executive sessions. So you have to have hiring standards and criteria. Uh, I think on the executive session, you consider the civil or disciplining, uh, or hearing complaints and charges against a public officer, employee, staff member or individual agent. So, uh, the, this is the one I was talking about. The person needing the stats has the right to decide whether they want that in public or private, yes.
A question because it's been a topic of discussion within the city. I have, um, a chapter on public meetings, um, on executive session. And, um, the definitions within this, this chapter don't define what an officer is. When you say that can, executive sessions can be done to consider employment of a public officer, what city employees fall within that definition of what an officer is?
Well, an officer can even be a counselor. I mean, but people, it, this applies to the counselor, for example, if, if they're a complaint against one of the counselors. Another officer would, it's likely the ones that apply direct, that report directly to the council, uh, which would be your city manager, probably your attorney, maybe your judge, uh, some places, hopefully. Or the reporter who will report directly to the council.
Only, only go, and so in, in the Oregon cities, because we don't, Oregon city doesn't hire our city attorney. So under that definition of executive session, it would be home rule for the city manager, the municipal judge? Or would it, or it would extend to department heads also?
Well, in, let me, um, answer that in a little bit different way. Um, it's safe also for an officer, an employee or staff member. So the fact that you would be having an executive session, it means that you, as the council, have a role in this, this, this charge, activity. If it's a staff member, the city, that reports to the city manager, you wouldn't be having an executive session to determine whether you discipline the person.
Because you don't have the authority.
Right, now, and your personnel rules say that you're the appeals board. So say the, the department head issues discipline and then that next level in your personnel policy is that the city manager's the next level. Then, then that wouldn't come to you. Let's say the city manager disciplines a department head and then because of the city manager's supervisor, you'd be the appeals board, then you'd have a role in it. But, so the reason I say officers would be a counselor, the city manager, the judge, um, you don't have the attorney report, she doesn't have to. The only reason, the only reason you'd go into executive session to discuss that is if you had a role as the council in whatever that activity was. So it doesn't really apply to anybody else unless you're the appeals board for our personnel.
He had an issue several years ago where the same city manager brought a, a complaint about a municipal judge's decision and the city manager directed him to come through the city commission with that, uh, concern. Uh, are we a court of appeal of a municipal judge?
Well, according to your charter, and we'll get to that later, but if I'm, I've done like eight of them since I put this together. Like in most cities, municipal judge reports directly to the council.
Yeah, but generally, decision be, generally, decision be appealed to the council.
Not really, because I don't, I, I think your charter says that the municipal judge's word is final. Yeah, if it, when you can't put some behavior as an employee of the city, then that's a country. So if the complaint is about harassment or something like that, heaven forbid, then, then that would come to you. But I believe your charter says, and we'll get down there and I'll need to clarify that when we get further down, that, that the municipal judge has the authority over those decisions. So I, I wouldn't see that you didn't appeal for something like that. But if, if, um, there was a complaint about the judge's behavior, then that would come to you. It depends on the actual situation. Does that make sense? But the city manager, the complaint wouldn't come to the city manager because the city manager doesn't have any authority over the judge, unless it's, it's specific that way. If I'm remembering your charter correctly.
And you are.
Okay. Um, if the, um, if the meeting was not requested, you don't have to let the person be in the room. So say you're wanting to hold an executive session to consider disciplining or to, uh, add an employee and you have a reason to be discussing that. Um, and the employee decides, yeah, I think that I'd rather have that executive session than, boy, I would be doing that. Um, then, then you don't have to have the employee in the room. So more to be, I mean, it's not gonna be totally productive if you have a complaint about the employee and you don't allow them to get their side of it. But you only wanna discuss what the complaint is before you bring the employee in, so you don't have to be that complicated. Uh, if you're gonna have an executive session, just to test that. Uh, if you can have an executive session, just to discuss labor negotiations, um, with a labor negotiator. This is the only executive session where the media are excluded. Media cannot stand in an executive session, um, other than this one. Or if there's litigation against the media, the paper owner. But that wouldn't happen. Is that a question over here? Did you hear that?
Yeah, quick question, do you know what the circumstances are, why, why labor negotiations, executive sessions have been allowed to screw the?
I, I don't know that. I think it's probably in the public records, the meeting manual, but I haven't investigated it to that point, I don't know that. I don't know for confidentiality and, and because it's a, uh, it might be because of something to do with the statute and all that, so. I, I don't, I'm not, okay, I'm not referring to this full disclosure. But, but that's, that's, that's what the executive session law says. Um, you can discuss real estate transactions in executive sessions. Reason for that is if you uh say you're negotiators, you should be attorney or you should be manager, and you say, we want this piece of property, and we're going to pay up to this amount for it, trying to, it's the best price you can, if that was in a public meeting and that was made public, that's the beginning for your discussion, so. That's the reason for that one. Um, and then also consider records that are sent from public inception, which would be documents submitted in confidence to the city. So maybe you have a proposal submitted to someone with some sort of um industry secrets as part of that. We had one when we were doing a code in plant, and, and so there was some technology in it, and it could be in an executive session because of that. Or maybe a citizen turns something in and asks to be, asks that it be held confidential, and the judge knows, but they turned it in, something like that. Or um, an appeal letter, a letter of advice from your attorney, that's to be kept confidential and, and have an executive session for that. Um, you can, instead of your attorney regarding a current, regarding current litigation or litigation likely to be filed, doesn't mean you can, it was your attorney on general legal matters in an executive session, but if there is litigation, or that you have the reason to believe that it's litigation coming, you can do that in executive session. And then you can do employee performance evaluations in executive sessions, but they also on this um section have the ability to have that in a public meeting as well. Uh, and then also to review security programs, so say you're going to review um safety precautions and measures for water supply to make sure your drinking water is safe for your citizens. You don't want some person who might be not at stake to know how to, to change the water supply, so that's why that one can be held in an executive session. So some common mistakes people make on an executive session, and um, we usually don't get any calls about those. The next question?
In the public records act, um, the chapter one and two had a list of enumerated exceptions for, which wasn't public, public records. But the legislator has, you know, peppered the entire um, you know, Oregon laws code with, with exemptions and other statutes. Um, and I'm wondering, is, and these exceptions where you can, these um enumerated lists of how you can have an, an executive session, is that, is that the list? Or, or like the public records act, are there somewhere else, um, you know, uh, legal justifications for holding executive sessions, or can we rely on that being the list?
Statute of list, and briefly, I, I can say out of confidence is that when you go into executive session, you have to state the statute, statutory site within that chapter and section, what you are going, which section you're going into executive session under. So it would have to be under that. So um, but my best advice is talk with the city manager and the city attorney if you have any question whether it fits within that category, because um, executive session is the only public meeting law that's covered by the government, government ethics commission, so you can have an ethics violation or complaint filed against you if you violate the executive session law. So you just have to be really careful. Did that answer your question? Okay. So, on the executive session, there are two mistakes people make. Um, one of the first ones is cannot keep sufficient notice, notice or announcement, and that's why I gave you the article on unscheduled executive session. The notice needs to contain the statutory citation for why you're going into executive session. You also need to read that when you adjourn the regular meeting and say why you're going in. The notice contains it, and then when you go in. Uh, the other thing that's part of that is when we go into executive session, and it's in this article as well, aren't things you need to do if the media are present, is make sure at each executive session, you clarify that the media cannot report on the items discussed in executive session. Um, sufficient minutes, you still have some minutes for executive session. You can have an, an audio tape of the session, you can add some just brief notes of the session that you went into session under this section. That's your minutes, but um, they're, so they have to be in depth, they're not um disposable to the public, so the public can't request the minutes from the executive session. Um, subject prep, this is one that's very tempting, and usually the city attorney or the manager are there trying to keep an eye on, so you don't get off the topic, because soon as you go off the topic that you're in the executive session for, then that's disposable, and you're violating the executive session law. Firstly, you have to discuss more than one topic, as long as all the topics you're discussing are allowable, and you stated that you were going in under all the different correct statutes. Um, too, if you violate what media can um report on it, another thing that happens, and I've had this happen to me personally, is that um, as soon as, even though you had it in an executive session, the media was there, they can't disclose what happened in the meeting, you walk out of the meeting and potentially, uh, the reporter says, no, I'm not quite sure what you meant when you said this in the executive session. And at one point, I had a new counselor who thought, well, the reporter wasn't there, but at that point, you're out of the executive session. Answered the question, well, you're not under the protection of executive session at that point, and then it can be disclosed. So I, I don't know that you reported for that, I hope not, but just be careful, as new counselors, you can fall into that trap. Um, meeting for the wrong reason, uh, you don't want to, you want to make sure that you're going into executive session for one of those allowed purposes. And that, the way you make sure on that is talk to the manager and the attorney. Another common mistake, it's the failure to give an employee or an officer notice that he wants to meet to discuss them, and give them an opportunity to um make the choice of having a public meeting. I can't count the number of phone calls I did at four o'clock in the afternoon from someone saying, we're going to go into executive session tonight, we want to fire this person, we want to discipline this person. And my first question is, did you give them notice, and did you give them an opportunity to have it in public meeting? And if they want to give a notice, then, then I let them know, you need to reset, don't be, don't be trying to make that decision. Because if they choose to have it in a public meeting, you still need to make, to polish that it's going to be a public meeting and not an executive session, so. And then, starting with these is the last one, um, with this discussing executive session matters outside the executive session, to require the trust of your fellow counsel to give the confidentiality. Doesn't mean you can't discuss with one of your counselors who lives in the executive session, as long as you do that confidentially, yes.
Up the road, um, Clark Miss River Water has a big controversy going on, because the board as a whole has filed an ethics complaint against one of its members. And one of the things that, that individual member is accused of doing, if I read the newspaper articles correctly, is just taping and disclosing um, uh, an executive session, and then reviewing that information.
So that's always, that's something with the ethics mission.
Yeah, now, is that, is that a criminal issue, or is that really an ethical issue, or both?
But, um. I don't think it's criminal, but I don't know that for a fact. I know it's probably unethical, especially if they taped it. I'm the one, I wouldn't let anybody but the city reporter run a tape in the executive session, that would be very, that would be a very good idea, I'd talk to the attorney about that, but um, but that, because it is an executive session issue, it can go to the ethics mission, and that third counsel can be, or a board member, or whatever commissioner could be found guilty, but the ethics mission would make that determination, and there would probably be some sort of fine that would be um made to that person if they're found guilty. The problem is, though, and, and the reason we can have these clauses is, what you're seeing with the water board, this, when we got complaints filed, that's front page news. If you're found not guilty, that's some little square on the back page. So you don't want to do anything to even get the complaint filed yet.
Jenny, I was going to mention that I'm aware of others, other cases in other states where elected officials uh got information in executive session and then talked about it inadvertently, and they'd wave the confidentiality by inadvertently speaking to a reporter about it, and sometimes it involves maybe corporations that had trade secrets that very touchy about.
Okay.
And then they turn around and sue the city, and of course, the insurance company is the first one to, I, I know our women do that, but the insurance company will say, well, they're not covered because they weren't acting in the scope of their responsibilities, so commissioner, you're, you're liable, not you're.
Personally.
So that's a kind of scary thing for a volunteer, but it's just better safe than sorry if you're worried, if you're concerned about the disclosure, then don't.
And it's hard to write, repair a reputation when you have that complaint filed, even if you're innocent, so don't do anything that could be, don't bring the tech recorder into the executive session, if you might, if you might. But you don't have to, I prefer one of them, you know. The recorder lost us on the page of the meeting. Okay, so public record laws, the public has the right, the rights to inspect um all non-incentive records. So the purpose motive who's asking for records, that's irrelevant, it's none of their business why they want it, or even if you do know why they want it and they're just, it's for no good, they have the rights to inspect that obviously. Um, you can charge fees that are the actual fees, whole material, the other, so if you have, if someone wants you to search through your archives, it's going to take three hours to staff, you could charge that. Um, you can charge, you know, maybe they want a thousand pages of copies, you can charge for the copies. Um, the state archives division has a retention schedule that needs to be followed for public records. Um, you know, some records are permanent records that have to be kept forever, but some documents that have to be kept for a year or seven years, and, and um, city reporters are really good at purging at the end of the year, each year, the things that tend to be purged. So once, once the archives division says it can be purged, then you can't have to pull it up, it's not a permanent record. Um, but if you still have it, then you have to produce it. So if you've never purged it, it doesn't matter, the archives laws say if you still have it, you need to produce it.
Jenny, I also want to add here that sometimes we'll get a question, this really hasn't happened very much here, but sometimes we'll get a question from somebody who says, I'm submitting an open records request, and I'd like to, to, I'd like to see the financial analysis from ten years ago comparing your water rates and your fee schedule there versus three other cities. In other words, they're asking us to create a document, not to produce one. When they say produce, they literally mean go out and produce a record that we don't already have. Well, that's a work assignment, and that only comes from you and me, it doesn't come that way, so we, we're only charged with producing records that we possess, we don't have to create a record. So that does, that's a distinction sometimes that matters.
Interesting, thank you. And that's kind of that whole, if you destroy it, makes on your archives reasons, it's a little bit, you don't have the record. And just like, you could provide the information, they could put it together, but you don't have to take the step twice to do that. So there are some exemptions from public records laws that are exempt. Um, one is personal safety information, so you don't have to give people's personal addresses and telephone numbers. A lot of times, police officers will put the city address as their address just to protect their families. Um, litigation records, you don't have to make that out when you're in the, you ain't got public records when you're in the middle of a litigation, so, um, and criminal investigations, both of these may come as a common sentence. Uh, other extensions are just disciplinary actions, if you check the discipline, did an investigation for discipline, that's exempt. Real estate appraisals, when you're negotiating for property, you probably um would like to keep that confidential. Now, I think there's a difference when it's a condemnation and when you're just negotiating first. Um, law enforcement and public safety plans are exempt. Internal advisory communications, employee personal information, you don't have to give out all your employees' home addresses and phone numbers, um, or their health records. Confidential information submitted by citizens, that's the, the enforcement complaint. Uh, liability records are exempt, so I guess they can't find out what the two check on. And utility records.
Is that why the citizens are, then why do you have to release any records on them? Are we going to use?
Yeah, it, so the citizens can't say, I want to know everybody who checked out this book on law making. You can't, it's exempt from public records. That's something, yeah. Especially if you can't say, um, you can't call the utility billing office and say, I want records on everybody who saw a late payment in the last three years, take that to you.
Going to bond this, question liability. Is there a, an insurance policy that covers commissioners to the city a liability policy, or should I be going out and getting myself a, half a billion dollars?
We, we have coverage for all of our elected officials and appointed officials, so long as they're acting in the scope of their responsibility. The lady, for example, said to Officer Smith on the street, Officer Smith, please go write that person I took it for DWI, and they did it. Then, then you, you, that's not the scope of your responsibility, so you, you could have an issue there, but as long as you're acting in the scope of your responsibility, you're covered.
All right, well, yeah, that's the important part, is, as a council, you have specific authority and roles, and individually, you have very little authority.
Right.
So if you individually call up the private contractor and say, I want you to come find this street, then you're on the hook for that bill, not the city.
So should go to consultants.
You need to call me.
And you're on the hook on the stub of your authority, you're okay.
Okay, call them if you don't.
Okay, so this, that section is on how to make the meetings work and how to have productive meetings. The first thing is establish a procedure, we'll keep you, and we'll go through that so that everybody's on the same page, what they say, what they mean. Um, just because you all, the copy doesn't mean, number one, you all read it, and number two, that you all interpreted what you read at the same time. So that's why, so we go through it together, and re-adopt those rules periodically, like you have new people come on the council. Having a well-planned agenda can help, um, you should have an effective meeting. And the things you need to consider are, how do the items on the agenda relate to each other? Um, uh, the policy impacts and connections to your priorities, so, so say you have plenty of items that could go on the agenda, and you don't want to go until three o'clock in the morning, because nobody can make a good decision at that point, then, then, then you need to look at the priorities of the items that could be on that agenda, how they relate to the other items, if there are citizens um with a strong interest in that topic that are planning a fundamental meeting, you probably wouldn't want to um not tell them that you have postponed something in the meeting. Uh, and then if there's a deadline, or if, if you need to make an immediate decision. So, for example, I know I read in the paper, my husband's probably excited about that you possibly might have, yes. But, anyway, so, so say that you've got one, and, and, you're laughing, you know. So, you know, like that. You probably wouldn't wanna put out for three months of a decision that you need to make on some economic development thing this month. So you need to look at the meeting dates and deadlines. Or if you're approving whether or not you can apply for a grant and the grant deadline is in March, then you can't put it on the April agenda. Um, do you have a policy on grants, for example, where, um, recent policy that, on the, you know, if it was less than fifty thousand dollars, depending on the recording required, but maybe it wasn't worth the staff time to survive or something, um, that kind of thing. So I don't know if your policy is that, if you're doing a cost grant where you are making a commitment down through the road, that you're gonna fully fund the position, I would imagine that would come to the council for approval, for part of the process of that. Um, some factors that, some other factors that contribute to successful meetings is, um, you think committees and work sessions, which is what you were doing tonight. You were investigating and learning about issues that are being pumped before you down the road for a decision, which allows you to not have that prolonged discussion, learning about the issue during the legislative meeting where you're doing business and making those decisions. And then you have time to go back and, and study and investigate too. Work sessions allow the entire council to study issues and a lot of times councils have work sessions, um, in a format where it's the council's time to ask questions and thought and the public doesn't participate in those, but they have the right to, or if it's a public meeting. Um, there are some caveats to using work sessions in committees, which would be the subcommittee where you assign three of the counselors or two of the counselors, your subcommittee to go investigate the topic. But you don't make decisions in those committee meetings for work sessions, because they're not decision-making meetings, they're educational meetings. Um, they don't preclude public debates. You have the regular meetings where the public has an opportunity to testify or to talk and debate. And the public is invited to those committee meetings and work sessions, and it's often community, you know. So, um, now I've got a section kind of generally where we talk about elected official, um, the different roles, elected officials, where your authority comes from, what your responsibilities are as elected official, what your role is as elected official, and then also we'll talk about the staff and the city manager, and what their roles are and how those mesh and how they overlap. So the authority to make decisions from the city is vested with the whole council. Um, not with individual counselors, unless the authority is delegated by the whole council to an individual counselor to, um, do something. Say, uh, you delegate authority to participate in the advisory committee on something. So you delegate to one more council. But generally, individual counselors don't have individual authority, yes.
If, if the charter is an individual counselor's authority.
Oh, then you have that authority. This, this is generally, and we'll look at what your charter says. So sometimes charters give some more, um, executive level authority to the mayor, for example, or the council president, or someone who's assigned a certain duty. Um, and, and so that's why we're invested, but your charter says. But generally, in Oregon, authority is vested with the whole council. Individual counselors don't have authority to make decisions on behalf of the city. So the mayor's responsibilities in general are to preside over the meetings. The mayor usually appoints committees, some, some charters say with the consent of the majority of the council, uh, we'll go through what your charter says. For the ceremonial head of the council, um, usually charters say the mayor signs ordinances of other documents approved by the council on the electricity. So general council responsibilities, that includes the mayor, the mayor's board, and I discuss council, but I know you're a commission, but you function generally as one. Um, and I thought I had changed all this to side conditions, so, sorry. So one of your responsibilities, not your role, your responsibilities as a, a counselor is to make decisions in public at the public meeting where the public can observe through the session and debate. You need to prepare for meetings, staff puts, um, packets together with the information you need to make informed decisions. So you probably shouldn't be opening your packet when you sit down at the, at us to go to the meeting. Having done it through a staff person putting the packets together, it's frustrating. Spend weeks putting that together and you want the council to be able to make a good decision by pre, providing to them the information or to the council needed to make that good decision. So, so as a counselor, it's your responsibility to look through that information for you. Vote. Um, you, for the meetings to run in an organized fashion, you need to, and I see counselors, or, you know, friend missions, or no more, and it, it all applies in the same way. Um, you need to be recognized by the presiding officer, uh, so that one person is speaking and everyone can hear what they have to say. I've been invited to city council meetings across the state, or many people are talking to me at one time and asked me to what I get invited to come. Um, so. Um, how do we fix it? Service, but you are, you're training. Um, you need to pay attention to the issue at hand that's being discussed. Don't be distracted, um, by what's going on out in the hall or checking your email messages or, or whatever. Um, and don't get distracted today. So I don't feel distracted, at least the thing called, don't be a distraction to the other people. So don't be having little side conversations that, like, so the other people, the audience, the other people speaking and the other people listening, you can't do what's going on. And then the main, one of the main things that citizens need to learn to do, and it's one of the hardest things to do, is to learn to respect the decision of the majority. Once you have that debate, your responsibility and your role is to make sure you make the opinions and the wishes of the people who elected you that you're representing heard. That's part of the debate, part of the discussion, but once the votes taken, that's the direction of the council, which is the only body that has the authority to make that decision. And you need to move forward or you'll get in one of these spiral cycles and be talking about the same things, meeting after meeting, and nothing ever gets done. So, um, I get a lot of calls about that too. And one of the things that people tend to believe is that, and I know that wouldn't happen, but, is that if my fellow counselors don't agree with my viewpoint, then they have an ethical problem. They, they're, they're lying, there's some ethical reason that they don't see it my way and, and I, you, you're wrong. But I think a lot of phone calls tend to be that the rest of the council is unethical because they don't agree with me on this point. And so, so just, you know, it's hard to learn to make, how to make, it's, it's, for some peo-, for a lot of people, it's a new, um, skill set, so, um, it's, it's learning. So, um, as counselors, you're the community's legislative and policymaking body. That's, that's your responsibility to make that, uh, those policy level decisions. You're not gonna be in the office day to day to, um, you know, to do the, the actual work, the, you know, those policy level decisions that give the direction to staff to do, the, the professional staff you hired to do that work. Um, your responsibility to sit residence, I'm sure that you're on duty all the time. Every time you go to the grocery store, to the park, or, or, um, whatever you're doing, you're always on duty as certain elected official. Uh, you're pretty productive, so you incorporate money to do the city's business, you love the taxes, you focus on the community's goals, um, and you know, make the projects in long-term considerations. So you're looking kind of down the road of where we wanna go and then the staff is figuring out how to get to the areas you wanted to go. They're doing the details, you're doing the vision. Um, and you have established policies that affect the overall operation of the city. So you do the higher, you know, percentage, let's say, or, you know, policies on how things overall will be done and those policies are applied as the managers and staff. And then one of your most critical duties is to appoint highly trained professional staff to carry out their specific decisions. So then the managers, the responsibilities of manager are different and your responsibilities as a policymaking board, um, the manager's hired to serve the community and the council. You hire the manage, manager to carry out your policy decisions. Um, they're bringing the benefits of training and experience in administering municipal projects and programs. So they're the trained professionals, the project management supervision, and they, they're to know how to put a budget together and how close ones are, and they, um, you know, they, they are trained in that area. You hire the right person there. Um, they prepare the budgets, the manager serves as your advisor. So if things come up and, and you want that investigation done or staff to be assigned to do the tasks, then you work for the manager. So if you have an issue come up, just like, um, hazing the seals or whatever it is down there, well, that comes up. And then the manager looks into what your options are and brings that back to you for policy decisions. Um, they provide, the manager, uh, and through department heads and staff in a community's size, they direct that it occurs. Um, they make sure that you have some feet and objective information on the decisions you have to make. They don't only provide you with one option, like the staff tonight provided you with several options. Um, because you, you have a decision to make. Staff helps you to propose and plans and gives you advice, so he'll be giving you recommendations, but whatever you decide, it's his job to then implement your decisions. But, but you can't make a good decision if you don't know what the options are as a, as a policymaking system. So that's one of the big roles, and they serve as part of the council. So the, the separate roles of the manager and the council serve to benefit the community. The collective power is concentrated with the whole council, so the power to make those decisions isn't in one person's hands. It's in whole council's hands, and so the community is represented well in making those policy decisions. That policymaking resides with the council, oversight of the day-to-day operations, so resides with the higher manager who's, who's barefoot high on the scene in city hall to do the work. Um, the staff carries out those policies, establishes the council. The, um, future planning decisions are made by the council with citizen input. You're getting into, I'm sure you had public meetings to talk about things that are coming up. Um, probably had advisory boards and committees, and you asked for the public opinion. Those are not made by one, um, those future planning decisions, policy decisions aren't made by one individual. And the council's flexible to meet the community's needs so that people have an opportunity and a way to be heard and have a voice. So the managers, their contribution to the community in this format, the council managers, or for the government, they work in partnership with the elected officials, they're, they're your agents. They, they help, they, they're supposed to, to make you effective, make you successful, to help you be good counselors, to give you what you need to, to be successful. Um, they bring to you the community-wide perspective for policy discussions. They have the people in and out the door day to day. They promote ethical governance, make sure you know what the laws are. They provide training so that you know what, what, the rules you have to follow are and what ethics, what ethics laws are. And, and, and first, inclusion and vote consensus, some of the voting, they're not gonna agree on everything and it'd be surprising if you did, because it's five different people. And it's not always, some cities that didn't put that way, but it's definitely the same people that agree on every issue. And, and so, um, the manager works for all of you, so he can listen and, and provide information and, and act as kind of your liaison. And, um, the manager's job is to develop and maintain, um, organizational excellence. So maybe the higher, manager needs to hire professional staff and make sure the staff are producing the work that you are expecting. So it's important that that council-manager relationship be successful, so that you're successful, so the citizens benefit from your policy decisions and benefit from the good work of, um, staff implementing those policies. So a good working relationship between council, um, and the manager requires some things that, so keep it going and keep it healthy. And one is open communication. So you should feel comfortable going in and talking with managers. Doesn't mean you go ahead and tell the manager, I want you to do this, because the council has that authority. It, it does mean you can go ahead and say, you know, what's this, or what's going on with that? And the manager needs to feel comfortable to call you and say, you know, hey, heard you had a concern with this, and, you know, and, and talk back and forth. And you need to care for the manager for your operating guidance. And one of the places that comes from is your, uh, annual goal setting, if you've got an annual goal setting. So then when manager can measure issues that come to managers' attention that, that can be brought before the council, can measure those things based on what your priorities are, what your goals are. And, um, and as the manager's assembling the budget and putting the proposed charges together, you can base that based on what your priorities are. I know there are limited resources here, there are limited resources all over Oregon and, and as you're putting the budget together, you need to focus on what the council's priorities are and, and what the goals are.
We had a case, this is several years ago, but, or a new commissioner had come on and, uh, someone sat there complaining about somebody that was running the department and that council person went and interviewed the people that were having complaints, then talked to the person that was actually managing the, the department and, uh, went through the city managers, saying this person should be fired. The staff, the staff of the department headed a question, just said, I, I don't wanna deal with this, and resigned. But there is no request that I know of on the part of the city manager that that person does resign, the person just didn't wanna deal with us. I'd like for you to speak to that here.
Well, I would say that counselors are very questionable that that employee, um, that they didn't have a lawsuit against them. Number one, based on your charter and the role as a counselor, individually, you have no authority over that employee. Number two, that's not within the scope of your authority as a counselor. So you could be personally liable if that person sued the city because that's not within the scope of your authority as a counselor. Number two, that person reports to the city manager. And so to speak to that the way it should have happened is that counselor, if they had a concern that was expressed to them, should have relayed that to the city manager and the city manager could investigate that. There are two sides to every story, uh, but, but as a counselor, you know, in points of the city, especially your line staff, which it sounds like that person is, if the counselor comes to ask you questions, you're gonna answer because they're the big boss. You know, contextually, where they have the authority to do that and not, um, and so you get into real trouble where you're perceived as corrupting staff, can't do that. So the way you should handle something like that is to relay that concern to the city manager and then the manager can handle it. No, it could probably be totally appropriate to just, I think, I don't need to know the details, but can you just let me know that it's better? Um, or, threaten that that person talks to the city manager, it's not the staff thing, it's not a council. The person doesn't feel comfortable doing it, maybe you can't. And the other thing is, um, anonymous complaints, if people want one to put their name on it. It's, you know, you can do it, probably with that. But, but the council member interviewing the employees of a department ad is totally inappropriate and it'd be a problem. Is that kinda where you were headed with that? So that counselor, the fact that, I mean, they may have been a really good employee and it may have not have been founded at all, but the counselor personally was very lucky that that person did choose to sue them personally. But the counselor personally was very lucky that that person did choose to sue that person. That's pretty data liability. How long have they been doing that? I've been at this for about an hour and twenty minutes. I'm fine, you're fine, or do you need a five-minute break?
Well, I think you're, that's one part of the, to, to your doctor, isn't it?
I'm, okay. So you have to tell me that I'm wrong. Okay, it actually will speed up the process. I appreciate that. So I don't know what slide number I'm on. Oh, yes, I am. I will talk much faster. Um, okay, the personal managers should all, there are some things some managers needed to do. They need to respect the pressure you're under as counselors. You're on the spot every time you leave your house. Your phone number is a phone book, a lot of them. So, and, and you're volunteers. You aren't full-time paid employees. And so they need to be able to assemble materials and do those things that as a full-time, um, or as a part-time volunteer, you don't have time to do. They need to treat all of you fairly, they need to treat you equally. Managers, um, shouldn't have vagrants. Uh, they need to know that each of your issues and priorities and what your hot buttons are and what, what you're interested in. And, and, and keep their ear to the ground on those type of things. They need to keep the senior staff, the department heads informed as to what your priorities are. And, um, what the department heads know what your concerns are and where you're coming from. They need to provide thorough, reliable, and primary information so that you can make the decisions. And they, um, need to establish procedures so everybody knows the rules of the game on how you interact with, with professional staff. And each city does it a little differently. You know, some cities, um, all your contact or questions with professional staff will go to managers. Some cities, there's, if it's a quick question, it's going to take twenty minutes or less. Yeah, you can go to the department head if it's just a request for information. And each city does it differently. And the main thing is manager needs to work with you to establish that process so everybody knows what's best. Um, they should be available to you for daily contact, have an open door policy. They need essential opportunities where you can interact with the, um, and communicate with the staff members. Uh, goal setting is often a time where you get a chance to meet with department heads and that type of thing. They, one of the big things is they need to avoid public surprises for you as counselors. You don't want to get, uh, blindfitted by something at a meeting and you don't know what's coming up. And a big issue and the whole town is out and you didn't know what's coming up. Um, and they need to give visibility and credit to the councils for the hard work they're doing for their leadership. On the other hand, counselors need to respect the manager's position, their expertise and their time pressures. Because they're trying to keep their fingernail on all of the different things going on in all the departments around the city. So while their doors open, you probably tend to go spend three hours every day in the manager's office, and they're not going to get anything done. Um, well, none of these people have time to do that.
I want to go back to department, this is a department show. I want to go back to department, this is a department show.
Space me. The place is saying either way. Um, so counselors, you should find out how the local government works. Mondays are really crazy at county, at city hall because everybody's trying to get ready for, for the, well, meetings aren't on Mondays. But, okay, Wednesday's really busy because everybody's getting ready for the council meeting or they're trying to put the package in. And maybe that's not the best time to go pop in someone's office and ask all the questions you thought of in the last six months. But, you know, you've got to kind of figure out what the ebb and flow is. Um, I would agree to conduct procedures in dealing with professional staff. And then, um, so the, the manager needs to follow those procedures too. So if the procedure is you go through the manager, they assign the work, and then they get back to you, let note that, you know, what happened? But they need to follow through and do that through that process. And maybe, um, uh, counselors need to read the information provided by staff and then ask questions. And if you ask those questions prior to the meeting, staff's going to be a lot more able to answer your questions if they have chances to look at the message. So if you read through your packet and you don't understand something or you'd like more information on something. If you call the person before the meeting, they're going to really appreciate the opportunity to give you a complete answer. Instead of sitting there at the meeting and saying, I'm going to have to back you on that. Well, then the public isn't, doesn't benefit from the answer to the question if they have to get back to you on it. The staff doesn't like to look like they don't know what they're doing. So, and, and you get your answer quicker if you do that, so. Doesn't mean that, I'm not ask the question in the meeting, but just you give them a heads up. Um, and the bottom line on this side is the other part of that, that's one of those public surprises staff don't have either. So if, you know, if you've got some item on the agenda or you're going to bring something under, up under council comments or whatever, you know. It helps to give a heads up to staff too. Um, keep the manager informed about issues and concerns in the community. So if you get that citizen concern about the department head, then you relay that to the manager. And that would go to any of the boards and commissions. Um, because the manager's the appropriate person to deal with those things. And then if it's smaller department head and it's a staff member, then the manager can work with those directly before it is a department head and, and, and make sure it's the best. Kind of relaxing is, um, things will a lot better if, if, you know, staff values your role and you value the hard work staff does and their expertise. Thank them for their work, support them in their efforts to carry out policy. It's done a lot easier if, you know, once they have direction, whether you agree with the direction or not. They actually, the whole council's decision supports them in their efforts and they can carry out that policy quicker and more effectively. Okay. This is a document prepared by Paul New, who has many years as an elected official and a deputy manager. Um, he's national, a national speaker, we've had him at our conferences a few times. He likes this document, I'm sure you've seen it before daily, right? Uh, on ten habits of effective councils and boards. So, finally, sharing this board. The first one is that you as a body need to act and think strategically. And you as an individual, you choose, you need to be a leader. You need to set, as a group, establish a vision or a goal for the community. Um, identify the strategic issues, uh, that evolved from that vision. So, you know, you're a district town, for example. And so then the, the issues that evolved from that, it sounds like discussion was one of those issues. So then that's an issue and then you have to have goals on how you address that. Um, and the city manager and staff, provide information on what's practical, practical and believable. Can you afford it and how might you afford it and what are the options? The second one is to understand and demonstrate elements of schemes. And team, I've got some information farther on on this, but your ma, the council's made, is made, and the boards and commissions are made up by individuals with different perspectives, different outlooks, different backgrounds. And that votes into the decisions. Um, you have to work this together as a team because individually, you can't get anything done unless you can get a majority of the council to agree with you. It might be a great idea, but until you can get a majority of the council to vote on it, it's not going to happen. Um, and you can't achieve anything without the votes of the people. Um, we'll talk about teamwork farther and some, uh, I'm a free, not responsible, um, group decision-making. Um, there are some stuff that you have to have. The first one is interpersonal, you need to be able to listen to your fellow counselors and listen to their perspective. Take that into account when you make decisions. Be constructive in asking questions and disagreeing and confronting and resolving differences. Um, support others and respect their ideas, whether you agree or not. Respect they have the right and they're representing an element of the community and their, their opinions. Um, participate actively, don't sit back and just say, I don't agree, but I'm, I'm, um, I, I did a goal setting with a counselor like that one time. And he wouldn't hear to say, but then at the end, when the goals were created, he wanted to shoot, ski that, the goals that had been created. You know, it's after the full time, and that, that's not productive. Um, and it makes the whole rest of the council drag everybody down, including the person who's doing that, because it doesn't make them look very smart. So, um, and when the discussions get heated or it gets intense, take a timeout, take a break. And the other one is, um, have the knowledge to do the job. So you need to kind of know what the parameters are and you need to educate yourself. Know the laws and policies and what, what you have to work with it. And be rational. So deal with the issues and the problems. Don't make it personal, deal with the issues with people. Um, analyze the issues and related facts and make the best decision from the facts that you have. And don't make it that if this person disagrees with me, they're my enemy and it's just, they're with me. And you could be wrong. We're talking about nothing, don't we? Uh, so, um, the first one is clearly defined roles and relationships. So you each bring something to the table, you each have a role at the table. Um, you, you make contributions. The mayor presides over the meeting, councilors participate in discussions. Managers and staff provide you with information to make decisions. And they each have two elements, you have your function and then your performance. You know, there are leaders that are involved within, within any group. And, um, there's going to be the process check person and the facilitator person. That kind of evolves naturally. Um, you need to establish the by-by, uh, council-staff partnership where you work together instead of against each other. Um, so that's where you set the parameters, that the council focuses on the policy issues on the vision. What staff focus on the day-to-day operations and implementing that policy. And when you, the, um, focus in that, that title that I just saw. Um, oh, no, when you follow the focusing on the means to implement or the micromanaging, how to do the work. Then you don't have to find that you set those policy decisions. So you need to focus on the bigger picture as counselors. Make a systematic evaluation of policy implementation. So once you set a policy, manager and the professional staff work to implement the policy, but you need to do a, a check, a status check. Um, so the manager should be giving you feedback on those policy decisions that, that staff is implementing. I don't know, some places do Friday reports or status memos or, or you say, come out, Justin, sit on some, let us know how it's going. So then you get a report. And those reports give you, they alert you if things aren't going quite as you had intended. There are a lot of times where there are unintended consequences to a decision that you make. You make it to solve this problem, you create three more problems over here. That's when you need to come back and look at whether you need to tweak that policy decision so that, that, that you don't have those unintended consequences. You make a tree, tree way, and now you have this, uh, going in. Obviously, it would be really nice to come off that bridge and not have to be the, yes, sorry. Okay.
I'm too old for it.
I mean, someday I plan to be old enough. Uh, uh, so both reports give the council a chance to make adjustments. And then all big council time and energy appropriately. You operate in several different realms. One is you be goal-setting as a group. Um, you have floor and analyze issues such as your workshops. Um, you dispose and legislate as counselors, so you make those decisions. And then you need community relations, uh, which is, uh, listening to your constituents and, and talking with people and seeing what their issues are and how things are going. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on these sites, I'm trying to get us through a little quicker. But, but each side, this talks about how you can help highly effective councils allocate time in each of those areas. So they don't focus on this one area. But, um, so you have your annual goal setting. You have worked such as to study issues, you devote your council meetings to voting and making decisions, um, not the analysis of the issues. And you spend, um, time like outside the council chambers for the meeting. Number eight is to set fair rules and procedures for council meetings. And you do have some of those, we'll go through those in a few minutes, yeah? Um, meeting procedures don't for groups, citizen input, but they make it so everybody knows when it's going to be appropriate for the citizens to give input. And that there will be a time. Um, if you don't have rules, meeting can continue on forever, um, for long periods of time without a focus. And as a result, you don't accomplish much because there's no focus. And the discussion never ends, still, but somebody can make a decision, you need to speak with specific.
All right. I have a question about another council that I serve on, that's an upper policy advisory committee. They've got a section there at the very beginning, citizen comments for, uh, items not on the agenda. On the items on the agenda, net citizens are never given a chance to comment.
Well, people do that.
Well, that's okay.
But I, I don't think it's probably the best practice because the citizens aren't ever heard. Now, there are times when you have to hold a public hearing legally, and so there are times.
It's an advisory board, so.
So it's an advisory board, okay, so they wouldn't have a public hearing. Oh, okay, all right. So that's where you have the authority to set your own council rules and how that operates. And part of your council rules is the, the items that are on the agenda and the order that they'll generally be. Um, so I would say probably some places have a, a place that's on the agenda where citizens can comment on things that are going to be discussed. Some places, um, give a time for citizen comment after the council has discussed it before the council finishes debating. Okay, so those are all the ways to handle, um, I would say you citizens probably don't feel like they're heard if they don't ever get the help about things that are made to be done. Um, so as, if the group develops the procedures and those systems together, then everybody knows is on the same page, unless it works. Um, give a valid assessment of public concerns and evaluation of council's performance. Some people might argue that that evaluation of council's performance is every four years or every two years when there's an election. But, um, as you evolve as a council and as a community involved, and I don't evolve. I don't know if Oregon City does, uh, focused through, so there's a community survey or anything like that. But those are ways that you can get feedback from your community at the meetings by providing time to read the public comment. Um, and the information can be helpful for you as counselors to be more responsive. And then practice continuous personal learning, which is very worth it. Okay, just a few things on effective schemes, um. So to be an effective team, you have to have a clearly defined purpose as a group. Uh, you need to stand, understand and appreciate the stages of team development. You need to stay clearly with each other, be open and honest, and give, um, each other positive and negative feedback. So if someone on your council is going on and on and on and making the same point five or six times, you know, maybe, maybe you can try to put that person, you have that kind of relationship. And so, I don't think it might be more effective if you know that on a team time and, but it's kind of a, kind of relationship. And you can do that constructively, maybe you just don't see that. But, but to give each other positive and negative feedback. If someone's getting hot and bothered and upset and getting personal about an issue, it's okay. And the mayor's runs the meeting, but you can all say, you know, hey, we should take a break. We need to keep this to the issue at hand and help govern each other. Okay, there are four stages of team development, not going to spend a whole lot of time on this, but the forming stage, which you're at now. Because you have new counselors on your group. And every time a new person enters a group, it's the forming stage, you're just coming together. You're set up and across the simple life or typical what you do, trying to figure out where you fit in, what the rules are, how you behave as a group. And the starting stages, once people, that's kind of the journey, and you start kind of trying to figure out where you fit. And if you're a leader and how to be a leader on the council and how to get heard and how to have. how to be a leader on the council and how to get heard and how to have your issues heard by the group and how to sway people so that you can get that majority to want to do whatever is you want to do. Um, so you kind of, it's called a starting stage because you're trying to fill your way and, and you have trying to figure out how to, um, have input and how to make the, get decisions here. The mentoring stages, once you kind of figure out how all that works, um, you kind of start trusting each other and start becoming a police, police group that knows how to work together. And you've kind of got the fine functional roles and the trust begins to grow. But the point, once you get through all those stages, then you start performing and you can actually get a whole lot done during the performance stage. But then as soon as you have turnover, you start all over again. So, some things that make a group of people a team are you need to have that shared vision, which is why, you know, at least every other year when you have a new council to do, you need to do that all together. Um. Uh, you need to have energy and enthusiasm for the work that you're doing. Commitment to working together for the community. You need to have respect, show respect for each other. And a commitment to understanding each other's perspectives and resolving conflicts. I have to agree that you should be speaking to understand why the person's coming from where they're. Um, you need to be able to communicate comfortably. You need to be able to agree, um, or to disagree openly and productively with respect. Uh, everyone has to participate for, to work, um, and have a high level of trust acceptance. What gets in the way? A lack of commitment. You're not all committed to making the best scheme you can have, then that's some way. Just so much training or active knowledge about processing rules and what your role is in elect, as an elected official and what the role of managers and what leaders staff is. Um, destructive competition, trying to talk the loudest or the longest. Um, third, communication interpersonal skills, not being able to express your concerns and the respect for me, that could be a problem. Personal conflict, so making it, you disagree with me, so I don't like you. Extremist pressures that stretch your capacity. You're one of the few that is in crisis. Um, that can stretch the ability of the council to, to be a public sixteen. Cortical hands standing. Um, you've been televised for a long time. I worked with the council and, oh, first six months of being televised was awful. Because everyone had this new podium. And we're going to stick in really long. And lots of pontification, but, um, so make sure you're heard, but make sure you're not the only voice in this in here. Unknownness to consider different perspectives. Um, it's embarrassing when the council can't be respectful to each other, to the citizens, whether in the meeting and to the staff that are trying to implement your policies. Next, you're unable to act if you can't work well. There's a team and it can cause results or delays, nothing is said. There are lost opportunities for the community if you can't act together as a team. And look at the big picture and you need to, as a group, look at what's good for the community, not what's good for me. Um, a stressful and imperfect, it can cause stressful and imperfect environment. And I don't know if this community has experienced that, but typically when there's a council that can't work together, you start losing staff. Um, hey, do you have public power? No, I think I've heard.
Well, ninety seven days, yeah?
Uh huh. I think I've at least stopped there, I think.
Yeah, you're all, yeah, you're. You're, you're almost there.
Okay, I'm sorry. It's all right?
I'm not drinking this stuff.
Okay. I'm gonna just skip through really quick and I'll look back on that.
Yeah, I mean, if I, on that, on that, if I had that kind of training earlier, much earlier in life, I probably had decent grades and top points in my work and play, but.
I think other policy things for me to consider in making decisions are that, that, the first thing is, is it beneficial to the community? Is it necessary for the community to move forward? Is it consistent with your vision and, and why, you know, what you want for your community? Can't be understood by the community. It shouldn't be so convoluted and, and technical that the community can't understand why you're making the decision. Although, I mean, just something that's always buttered up. All they need to know is that it will flush when you push the button. And it's necessary. Have you, are you well informed? Have you done the, the, the study that you need to do to make sure that it's something that's going to be better for the community? Open to change or improvement, that's that mission role review. Responsive to urgent needs, submerging challenges, things that are going on in the community. And, and is it possible to be enacted? Is it legal, what you're looking at doing? Um, is it feasible by it wise? And is it something that you can actually inform the, I've seen cities do hard enforcement. Or, so it's that personal way that could staff implement them or, you know, they can't enforce them, so you ought to look at that. Okay, so I'm gonna, just very briefly, just a few slides on ethics and then we'll go into your charter. The first one is that, um, as you're in your role as planning commissioners, counselors, or renewal board members, there are going to be things that come up because you're also members of the community that are potential or actual conflicts. So, um, so a potential conflict will look like that what they are actually, we're going to put a slide, but but when a potential conflict arises, you can still take action, but you have to disclose that there's a potential conflict and that you still, that you feel you can be effective and, and, you know, it's not an actual conflict. You need to disclose that in the meeting before you, before you do any debate and before you take any action. If you have an actual conflict, you need to disclose it, but you can't participate in a discussion and you can't vote.
Rather than have people leave the meeting room altogether, is that necessary?
Um, it's not a bad, leaving the room, I'm not, it's not a bad idea. Um, a lot of times they'll remove themselves from the audience, you know? And they're tempted to make faces in the back, really, really shit. I find it to you, so, and, and you don't try to sway the decisions of your fellow counselors and you don't participate. And you can participate by doing the thumbs up and down from the back of the room or making faces. Um, so you shouldn't do that.
More, more hands.
Um, oh shoot, this is not that long. Okay, but if you're uncertain whether you have a potential or actual conflict, you can call the government standards and practices commission. This is their phone number. Um, you should cover for the, for the conflict prior to stating or discussing a referendum. You need to explain the nature of the conflict when you declare that you have an actual potential conflict. Uh, you can't just abstain without first declaring why you're seeing. And, um, the, the declaration and the nature of the conflict need to be noted in the minutes. So when you get the minutes after that meeting, uh, there have been issues where it wasn't in the minutes and then someone had a complaint filed, but it wasn't in it. Um, so what, before, when you get the minutes for the next meeting, before you approve those minutes, you should make sure your conflict is noted in that.
What would happen if you have a majority of your, your condition, um, the conflict of interest?
So there, there are some exceptions to, um, that piece, and I've got those in a couple of slides and I'll talk to you about that. Um, so the definition of potential conflict of interest, um, oops. A potential conflict of interest is where you could, your family member could benefit financially, um, based on whatever decision benefit or be to your detriment, based on a decision you make. So for example, say your spouse is a real estate agent in town. And you're looking at a new development or a development, a mixed-use development that you're looking at. So, when your spouse is a realtor in town, down the road, there's a potential that something, you know, a, after the thing is constructed, they could potentially sell a property in the development. So that's a potential conflict of interest. However, if your spouse is the agent or the developer who will really be selling all those properties, that would be an actual conflict of interest. For a family member, you know, they aren't always that easy to identify. So, my suggestion is work with your S P C or your city attorney. Or if you can't reach your city attorney, you can call our legal services and you can talk the kid out where, whether it is. But if you see that agenda some and you think you may have a conflict, you should be checking.
Yes, one quick question, um, sort of along this line, concerning minutes and voting on minutes. Um, we discussed this briefly there, uh, when there is a, there's a commissioner that was not present when those, at that meeting, but they can still vote, um, vote for the minutes, for approval of the minutes, correct?
Yeah, they don't have to have been at the meeting. Um, usually minutes are on a consent agenda, we've consulted those here. And so you just approve the whole consent agenda unless someone has obtained. If you read minutes and you see something missing or, or want to clarify something, uh, your staff will really appreciate it if you bring that up before you get to the meeting so that they can get the, listen to the tape or make a correction and bring a correction so that you can actually. Um, so there's, there's a statute, um, on S two forty-four, zero four zero, which talks about, and this is an ethical one, talks about no public official shall use or attempt to use their official position or office to obtain financial gain or avoidance of financial detriment that would not otherwise be available but for their provision. Uh, and it's called the but for a test. So if you're going to benefit just because you're the public, you're the state ambassador, the county commissioner, then you, um, can't take that action. There are some exceptions to it and, um, those, go through the government ethics commission, I talked about that. Here, they were established in nineteen seventy-four, seven on the board. And there is a new document for public officials that you can vote through and it identifies all those areas where you need to be careful. You can download those from our website. Uh, there's a link under ethics, you can download the guide. Okay, um, since that's going to have our ethics tutorial, this isn't the ethics class, which is some ethical leadership. But generally, the public expects you to be ethical in your decision-making. Um, and, uh, the ethical failure, if, if one of you fails ethically, it's the whole board or commission look down. So you need to be careful because you won't just embarrass yourself. Um, I'm gonna skip through this to down to the charter. So it's we're short on time. Okay. I'm on slide number ninety-four. Okay, so, um, now, we talked about generally what your roles are and how things work, uh, for you as a commission and as a board. So this is, this is going to go into how that fits into what your actual charter says. Um, your charter is developed, like most charters in Oregon are, based on the model charter that was present, that was prepared, that, well, there have been model charters since way back in the fifties. Uh, used to be by the rural government standards. That was a year ago. They went out of business and then leaked and developing and since. So a lot of this, your chapters and sections in your charter are similar to other cities. All the powers and all of that, the statutes and constitution, common law, the U S and the state are, are granted to your city in your charter. Um, they, you have the legally construed clause, which is just because it's not named specifically as a power of the city, um, doesn't mean you don't have that power. So unless it's precluded by federal or state law, you have the power, um, to do anything that a city can do. So, um, that's the power is not restricted to those that are expressly named in your charter. And then it says that you'll have all the necessary being powers to, to conduct municipal affairs. So all cities that I've worked with in Oregon have that clause, um, to get them all the power necessary to do what cities need to do. So form of government in your charter in the chapter three, uh, talks about where the power is vested in your, um, city charter says all the power the city is vested with the commission unless otherwise provided in the charter. So it's that clause that it's with the whole commission, not individuals. So this commission is composed of a mayor and fourth commission, so the mayor is a member of the commission as well. In some cities, the mayor, that there are charters, some cities the mayor votes, some cities the mayor doesn't. Sometimes the mayor only votes in case of a tie. Your mayor is a member of the commission. Um, so, and you're all elected from the city at large, so you'll have wards. You're elected for four-year terms that are staggered. Term losses begin on January second of the year following the election. If the second is holiday, then the term begins on the following day. Um, and you have term limits here, which is as common. I've worked with other cities that have that too, but so measures, um, you can't be elected for more than two four-year terms in any ten-year period. So, uh, my understanding is you do two terms, go off for two years and then run again. Okay. Um, so each office of commissioners designated by number, so you have commission seats designated by numbers. The recorder assigns the numbers to each of the four commission positions. Um, candidates must run for a specific position, so I guess you choose which of those open positions you run for. Um, voters can vote for only one candidate per position. No person can file for more than one position at any single election, so you couldn't file to run for mayor and commissioner at the same time. Does that mean that if you're a sitting commissioner, you can't run for mayor? You can run for mayor because you wouldn't be running during the same election. Okay. That would just open a seat if you wanted. Okay, okay. Okay. Each office of commissioners will be, okay, let's see. Uh, mayor selected for four-year term at a general election. They're also elected at large. Uh, mayor has to be a resident of the city for at least twelve months prior to the election. They'll remain a resident of the city while holding office. No person shall file for the position of mayor and commissioner during the same election, so that answers the question. Term of mayor commence on, on January second. So you can't, so if you had been a commissioner for two times, then you'd have to wait two years to run for mayor.
Right, unless you're, um, staggered, like, uh, well, you'd have to, like, let's see, I'd have to wait. Or you just say.
So if the office of mayor becomes vacant, a special election shall be held at the next available date unless there are less than six months remaining in the mayor's term. And then if that's the case, the commission will request a person to fill the vacancy for the remainder of that.
It's probably a charter following that. And the question on this, you've got, you've got a situation where
the time, design just before the final date for the next possible election. Or there's also no time for anybody to step up and run, because that was.
If it's a petition time.
If it's a petition, they can do it, because there's almost no time to do something, so.
So I would say, you know, if it's not an election, if you don't get anybody to sign up by that time, then the next possible election would be the one after that, because you didn't have anybody to. Counselors, um, you have a city two four-year terms in office within the last ten years. As mayor or commissioner are not el- not eligible for the mayor. Um, the commission president, commission, enjoying the mayor, lets the commission president from its membership by ballot at first meeting in January following a general election. So every other year, your council president is elected for two years. Commission president shall perform the duties of mayor, of the mayor and the absence of the mayor. And there are other offices, uh, noted in your charter. And just so you know, charters, they're, your articles are incorporated, you can't just fix something in the charter. If you want to change something in charter, it, uh, it's a public process and has to go through an election. And I don't know if you've been to that recently, but. But I have counselors all the time, well, can't you just change the charter yet? You can if the citizens decided to vote for it, so. Um, official officers shall be the city manager and judge. So the only two officers noted in your charter are the manager and judge. Each shall be appointed by the commission. Uh, the commission can appoint officers as it means necessary. So if you decide you want to be the mayor or, you know, other officers, you can create those positions. Um, and you can combine any appointed offices except manager and the judge can't be the same person. Um, and the judge can't be supervised by any other appointed officer, the judge has to report to you directly. Um, salaries, compensation for officers and employees is set by the commission. So you set the salary schedule for, for employees. Um, commissioners don't receive a salary. You can get reimbursed for your expenses, so in carrying out, if you lose on some travel or, I'm sure, yes.
I was just wondering if that compensation being set by the commission, does that include just the salary level? Or does that also include the motive?
Hmm, can you explain what, I'm, I, I don't know.
When they're somebody's salary or all of it, for example?
Um, I think that's standard to the realm of, of the manager's duties. Uh, and also fair rate, F L S A covers that too, because to be salaried, um, well, well, whether you qualify for overtime, um, is based on your classification under fair rate of standards. Um, most people say they make this month amount for year or this amount for month. But your payroll system break it into an hourly relation. And, um, and if, if the person qualifies for overtime, then basically you have to give overtime and hourly amounts. So I don't really think that that's the level of detail that the council would be involved in. The council would probably, um, usually a council would set a salary range for that type of position. And usually it's part of a budget process. Or part of adopting a collective bargaining agreement. So by adopting or approving the collective bargaining agreement, you're, uh, um, setting the wage range for those positions. Now, as the manager hiring someone, say they got someone with twenty years of experience, the manager would then within that range, maybe hire someone towards the popular range instead of the bottom. That would be a administrative decision, but you would set the right, that makes sense? Qualifications of officers, um, to be a, uh, to officially, you need to be a qualified elector, so you need to have the, 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 the city notice. Um, have to reside in the city for at least, during the twelve months immediately preceding the election. Um, and the commission is the final judge of whether or not you're qualified or whether technically.
That means you must be qualified, unless you, you must also be registered as an editor?
I could say that would be that, would that be. But I'm not an attorney class. If you really had to judge that, I'd talk to your city attorney. Yeah, that's how I would interpret it. Um, but my attorney tells me I have to tell you I'm not. It's trying to be reliable, so. Um, and the meetings in section fourteen of your charter, it talks about how you'll hold regular meetings in the city at eight P M. on the first and the day of the seventh day of each month. A month or a week is made of by the commission. So you must have otherwise scheduled meetings. Uh, from meeting class on a holiday, then meeting self the next day. Um, it talks about, but the commission shall adopt rules for the government of its members and proceedings, which you have done, um, through ordinance. Mayor or three commissioners may call a special meeting by giving notice to all the members of the commission then in the city. You can't call a meeting with less than three hours' notice. Uh, and you can't call, um, you can't call a special meeting more than forty-eight hours after the notice is given.
How can three commissioners call a meeting and not be in violation of the public, of the meetings?
Well, what you could do is, you know, two, two commissioners, you know, something came up and two commissioners come and said, we really should have a meeting. Well, first of all, you'd probably call the mayor, because the mayor can call a meeting by itself. The mayor or three commissioners, but if the mayor's out of town, you have to have a way to call a special meeting if the mayor's out of town. So if the mayor's out of town, or sometimes it occurs that the mayor doesn't think they need a meeting, that you still feel curious. Um, so you could talk to one person and then one of you could talk to someone else. You could call the city manager and say, you know, I, I think we need to set up a meeting. And then he could call the, or.
How can you have a serial meeting in, in this lane county?
It would be, that's why I was trying to. Um, you could tell and say, I think they need to have a meeting on this, or we just thought we thought we need to have a meeting. And then the manager could call and just say, you know, you know, I got an indication from a couple counselors who were talking, are you okay with running on a meeting? And then three people couldn't agree. But this is just part of, and I know the public meetings laws kind of make it weird and maybe you should, uh, have a, a lot of places will say one less than a forum can call a special meeting. So if, if I were to redo your charter, I might say two counselors together to ask for special meetings. That's wrong. So you have to follow the public meetings laws, you can't have a serial meeting. A three-year manager comes in, she plays, and it, it's going to be very uncommon if the mayor's in town. Uh, and, and if there is a valid reason for a meeting, that, you, you, your first protestant should be to call the mayor and say, we really think we need to have a meeting about this. And the mayor can do that on his own, off the opponent's. Okay? And that's, um, where, uh, you need to check that you shouldn't be turning, but I'm just telling you what your charter says. Special meeting may be held anytime with the common consent of the commission members. So if you're at a meeting, it's running really late and you still have agenda either left, you could add a meeting when they're all together in public meetings, say, you know, we're going to continue this and have a special meeting in two days. Um, but based on your charter, you couldn't call that special meeting for more than, oh, look, it's like you can hold it at any time. Uh, majority number under section fifteen, your forum definition is a majority of the members of the commission constitute a forum. Talks about if a smaller meet, group meet and you don't have a forum, you can need to compel the attendants of the missing members. Um, record of proceedings, section sixteen, you have, you need to cause the record to be capped with, how about that, the slides, which are in anyway. Um, the incident rates shall be taken and entered into the record for any questions before the commission, so, um, there has to be a count. Did, was there a question on that? Okay. Um, for cities, see, and how about, I wish I have to do it anyway, but no action of the commission. According to your charter, it also says that, that no action of the commission would take would be illegal unless promotion and the action and the vote were taken at an open vote. In your charter, the mayor's function based on your charter, mayor is the chairman of the commission, resides over the deliberations. And they have the authority to vote on all questions before the commission, your and their votes. Could guide or deserve order, enforce the rules of the commission, so you set the rules. And then the mayor has the right to enforce the rules and to defend. The mayor, according to your charter, determines the order of business under the rules of the commission. So you have council rules that kind of have generally what your order of business on your agenda would be. And within that general, within the order of business, then the mayor sets the agenda within there. So if the mayor could say, you know, I think we should talk about this issue first, or we got people from out of town coming for this one, so, um, maybe we should talk about this before this other thing. And so that your charter is the mayor's that authority. But in terms of majority of the commission, pressing down a meeting is necessary to decide any question before the commission. So you have a forum and then a majority of that forum of the people that are needed to vote on an issue. So if you have someone missing and you only have four people there, you still have to ask me. But if you have three people there, she would be, could decide, but that would be a forum. And the terms and duties of the office, officer, the mayor under section twenty, the mayor appoints committees provided by the commission rules, so you set up what committees you're going to have in your rules and the mayor appoints committees. The mayor signs our records, the proceedings approved by the commission, mayor doesn't have the special power.
You're going to assume that's true.
Uh, the number of filings is passed by the commission within three days. And endorse of all bonds, facility officers, licenses, contracts, proposals approved by the commission. And then in your charter, it specifically talks about the manager, manager is the administrative head of the city government. The managers chosen by the commission because of their qualifications, not because of any political, um, reasons. They don't need to be a resident of the state or the city at the time that they're appointed. Before taking office, uh, they need to provide a surety bond in and out specified by the commission and then the city pays the premiums on that.
Uh, I'm, I'm, you had a point where we hired a city manager, your commission insisted that the city manager then reside in city where you say.
Um, I, I remember. If it's not in your charter.
And the person, the person was hired out of state.
Yeah. Oh, it's just moving, but.
And they're moving, but it would be for a card, that person do five years within the city.
When I'm going to say mandatory permits, if it's not in the charter, um, I'm fine with the council putting, you know, it's preferred or that you're within the city limits, but, but you will limit your, limit yourself if, if they, um, have to live in the city limits. Especially if it's someone who lives in the area and with two, um, two spouses working these days, or, you know, it's hard to do that. Um, okay, so the manager's qualifications, okay, okay. The manager is appointed for an indefinite term, but they can be removed at pleasure of the council. So basically, continuous probation. I, that's how it says. So I'm, managers, continuous probation.
You understand that?
Our, our people have to be self-healed, our.
Am I running to the city limits?
Um, so if the manager's position, um, becomes vacant, the commission has to adopt a resolution with an intention, the intention to appoint a manager to appoint another manager at the next meeting. So you opt to by your charter, point the inner on the damn board of the manager. Um, you start to find a new manager to fill the vacancy within four months of the resolution to refill the position. So that won't give you much time, does it? Um, powers and duties for the city manager, they are to devote their entire time to the discharge of their official duties. Um, they need to attend all of your meetings unless you have to use some, you might let them on vacation once or on. Um, these commissioners advise at all times of the third needs of the city. Uh, they need to make a course annually or most frequently is requested by the council or the commission on all fronts of the public in the city. Uh, the manager sees that all ordinances are in force. So once you adopt those policies or ordinances, the manager makes sure they get enforced. Uh, manager sees that all trans sizes, leases, contracts, permits, privileges of the city are observed. They designate a city recorder, so the manager hires a recorder. Um, they appoint and they remove appointed city officers and employees, except the municipal staff. Um, and so the council who interfered all the employees, appointed the department heads, this is in your charter. They, they should be really happy. Nothing happened. Um, they start the authority to transfer an employee from one department to the other, so the manager can do that. They supervise all departments to obtain an authorized efficiency. They offer the purchasing duty for the, for all, all the departments. So all purchases shall be made by regulation signed by the city manager for an authorized resume, yeah.
Do department heads have to be hired by a competitive process?
Um, I typed it out harder to give you that, it depends answer. Um, but it does depend, uh, you know, there are, a lot of the competitive process pieces are types of collective bargaining agreements, for example, so, um,
Could have them in a fight for.
That would in a fight for the department, so it's an exempt position. That is probably, uh, you know, they're exempt from overtime. Sometimes cities promote them again, sometimes, um, you don't have to go through all the processes, but you would for a collective bargaining position. So because it's a professional position, you may have someone, um, that you appoint rather than have to go through all this process. So I would recommend that as you look at doing that, you, talk to your city attorney and make sure that what you're wanting to do is okay. But, but because the department head is an exempt position, you don't want to be waiting on that. But if you do go out and competitively advertise, then you need to make sure that, that the process is fair and, and doesn't, um, you know, you have to do the equal opportunity employer, the public employer. You need to make sure you give everybody equal consideration if you do go out and advertise effectively. And there's some things that you can't ask and you need to remove from the application. Or they consider if you do go out and want other process. Do you need to add anything to that?
No, I, I don't think I'm sure it requires that process, but you know, there's, there's things that you don't have to do or you still should do.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I don't think I've ever made an appointment that didn't have a, some sort of process.
Do you have a department head who's committed to the commission, without a U.
That is the universal process, but my.
You might have an internal competitive process. Some union contracts allow in, regardless of the state. Internal candidates have preference over external candidates based on a union contract and stuff like that. So, um, there are all sorts of laws that you have to follow, employment laws, and that's why you need to have professional, um, advice on that.
Yes.
Are you a city attorney?
No. No.
I shouldn't have looked that down when you introduced yourself. So did I say anything wrong?
No.
Okay, so the manager supervises the operation of public utilities owned by the and operated by the city. Has general supervision over the city property. Um, manager uh has a seat at the commission meetings can participate in the discussion if they don't want to vote. Uh, manager pro temp, and the fit's managers extended absence from the city or disability commission shall appoint a manager pro temp to the position taken. Uh, who shall possess the powers and duties of the manager. Yeah, a manager pro temp, so if you have an interim, the pro temp um has to point to remove employees. So you can't have an interim come in and start firing people. There'd have to be approval of the candidates, or officials, so. Um, ineligible persons under the manager, staff or any person related to the manager or his or her spouse, they hold a former officer, I don't know, with the city. I'm not sure, I know there are some laws coming out, I don't know if you can really enforce that, but they couldn't certainly report directly to the manager, but um, but your charter says that, so I think. I've heard comments on both sides. What those the eight I heard. Hasn't come up, I think. Now, since the manager reports to you, the manager probably wouldn't encourage it, either family members took against the party. Okay, so you have rules of procedure that were adopted in two thousand ten.
They were drawn, yes.
They're drawn, so have it. Okay. They're on the next agenda. This is what I said. I know. This is what the coffee that was given to the three months ago said. Okay. So if there have been changes since then, I'm sorry, but I didn't know. Okay. Under your rules of procedures, um, it also reiterates what the public meetings laws say. Unless your charter says that the deliberations of the proceedings need to be in public. Talks about a forum, uh, three members of the commission constitute a forum. Um, I, if I were to give a suggestion, what if you have a vacant position? Well, I guess if you had two vacant positions, then two would be a forum. I have the same majority of the members of the commission, but it's not an adopted idea. Because the part that happened in San Diego, I worked with a city that was down to two resultment, uh, two counselors for about eight months. And they were in office attendance with respect. And they they couldn't agree enough to appoint another member, so. So, um, they're probably in the position where if if you were to judge which five members had said or their trump rules had said that three members of the commission constitutes a forum, they couldn't have ever had a forum or done business for very minutes, or appointed other officers, so. Um, and there have been mass recalls in other parts of the state. So if I were to do council rules, I'd probably ace that. Um, majority of the members twice another meeting are necessary to decide any question before the commission. Attendants, you have section two. Missioners are expected to attend all the meetings and work sessions. When an absence is necessary, um, you're expected to notify the mayor or city manager of the courtesy that you're not going to be there. That way they know if they're going to have trouble having a forum. Um, absences will be noted in the meeting minutes. Missioners, they participate in meetings or work sessions via conference call or other electronic meetings. So that's okay in the public meetings laws, and you can do that. Especially if it means you have a forum versus not having a forum. Uh, compelling attendance in your rules, uh, says I want a forum, it's not a permanent meeting. Where any commissioners, commission, faulty attendants, so the absent commissioners, and of course, the section fifteen. What does that mean? You gotta be in my house in my pajamas and bragging.
You need to say you're safe.
I think it means that everything can say, you don't have a forum without you. Or they could call you and say, I know you're sick, but can you participate over the speakerphone? Like that? That would be. Same with the state of Georgia, I'd be upset. But you're you're trying to grow roots. So it's not like the party where you teach about the people, these are the rules of council. So you're very much about that, I mean, because you're the ones developing these rules. So if it's not for you, or you're not okay with that, then you probably ought to have some discussion. Uh, fifteen minutes of the meeting, the commission provides for taking of written minutes. Uh, you don't need a full transcription or uh or recording, except as required by law. It's not required by law, but um, minutes, you need to give a clear reflection of the matter suspected of meeting. The views of the persistence minutes shall be available to the public within a reasonable time after the meeting. Probably doesn't mean a pod the next one. Um, do you take three minutes available before they're approved? Right, but I mean, it says within a reasonable amount of time available to the public, does that mean you make them available to the public before the council has a chance to adopt them?
Only through the path of the previous.
Sorry, I forgot, okay.
Although if someone asked for a copy of the draft minutes, it's a public record, but it's not exempt.
No, 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 I I just, a reasonable amount of time, I just, you know, a reasonable lean by the time the next chapter was out, I'm sure. Um, minutes shall include following. All commission members present, all most of the proposals, resolutions, orders, ordinances, and measures proposed and their disposition. The results of all votes and the vote of each member by name. So in your council rules, you have to say that all the As and Ns need to be recorded, this says by name. Which is good. Um, uh, reference to any document that's discussed. Uh, minutes of executive sessions, so you clarify now thus the work. All four required minimums of minutes for regular meetings have to be included in the executive session minutes. Instead of written minutes of record, they be kept in the form of sound recording or other sort of methods. You keep a tape, an audio tape of your, of your deal, okay. Um, need to be trans, they don't need to be transcribed unless required by law and a recording shall be kept permanently by the city board, so. Required by the meeting is responsible for preparing and collecting, retaining and furnishing copies of the minutes. Uh, they're prepared prepared in sufficient detail to meet their required use. But I don't think you want thirty page survey to minutes for a meeting, just a little A and L stuff. Sound recordings are to be made at least being, but in the case of equipment failure, it doesn't negate the validity of the written minutes. They're usually just a rule about not the written minutes. A real statutory part that summarizes an agenda report can be self-referenced. So when your uh director gets up and basically re-orders, puts in the report, it doesn't have to refer to the report. Names and addresses, um, is provided if it's specified in the written minutes. Whether they're a citizen or be anything or not. The license thing is going to that to start of um safety reasons, so. Citizen, the citizen testimony is a summary of written materials that can be referenced. You don't have to rewrite everything written material say. All exhibits not included by the commission shall be noted in the minutes. So if a citizen comes up and has something else, separate ways, you are under control of the city recorder or extraordinarily lengthy meetings, the minutes, that wouldn't happen, would it? Okay. The minutes shall be ready in final form by the next meeting. Oh, that, every other week, I've done, okay. Uh, minutes of public records upon composition. If distributed cards with mission approval, they'll be marked as shot. So I don't see that one. Uh, after minutes are prepared in final form, they shall be submitted to the commission to be approved. Uh, commission can make amendment, may amend the minutes more accurately reflect what transpired in the meetings. Unapproved, the minutes shall be kept on file permanently. Sound recordings are kept for twelve months, minimum of twelve months. Minutes and sound recordings will be available for public inspection. And do you um do you make changes to the minutes after meeting if there are changes? Um, and handle separately, okay. Um, right of commissioners to be heard, any commissioner designed to speak shall be recognized by the chair. So you all have an opportunity to speak on the topic. Comments are to be confined to the subject under consideration. Addressing staff, so this is that direction and the council has it in the rules. Commissioners shall address questions or requests of staff through the staff person presenting the agenda item or through the city manager, so if that staff person is not presenting. All of the requests of staff must go through the city manager, so that's clarified here. It's something we talked about earlier. Rules of order, you use Robert's rules of order. Um, the government situation is not covered specifically in your rules or in the charter, in the event of a conflict, it's the rules of of procedure. And Robert's rules, your rules, Trump, Robert's rules. Um, city attorney is the parliament parliamentarian for the commission. Does the attorney come to all of your regular meetings?
Yes.
Do you have an in-house attorney or a contact attorney? So you start your meetings at a different time now, or at seven o'clock on the first and third Wednesdays, every time? Um, they're holding the commission chambers and the assistant chambers, okay. Uh, and the commission meeting calls on a holiday, the meetings start the following day. Okay, here's the, so your charter has that special meeting. And now, um, here's what your rules say. The mayor can call a special meeting. Three members of the commission can also call a special meeting, so it restates what your charter says. Still not quite sure how that happens, but I think if you work through the city manager. Special meetings can also be held at any time by common consent of the commission, which would mean you're in a forum, you're at a public meeting, you can resettle another meeting. Special meetings are subject to the same rules applicable for regular meetings, meaning they need to be noticed with, you know, at least twenty-four hours. Emergency meetings can be called not earlier than three or later than forty-eight hours after notice is given. Which is what I, your charter says about special meetings. So it's a bit of a sense if you say emergency meetings that. Um, after an emergency meeting specifies the day, the hour, the location, and the subjects to be considered. The work schedules are typically held at five-thirty, but you started earlier tonight, right? Okay. Um, on the second Tuesday, you spend, you can't take a formal vote. So you, I saw it when you were talking about stuff, you kind of like consensus, they're like, it's now. Commission can poll in order to seek consensus on matters. Agendas prepared by the city manager based on the following. For the work schedule, all items requested by the mayor, the commissioners um are listed. And then all items deemed appropriate by the manager, and don't look that forward there. Um, oops. Uh, this was from the commission pertaining to the committee reports. Uh, types of meetings, executive sessions, so in your rules, it it references the statute. Executive sessions are closed to the public, except representatives of the news media allowed are allowed to attend. Commissioners and staff and attendants shall not disclose the content of any discussion in executive sessions, so it's in your rules. Make sure everybody understands. Commission can require confidentiality and can adopt appropriate sanctions for a breach. So some cities uh censor with censure, um, which is basically a public referendum, the council, but it's safer commission can um adopt appropriate sanctions.
I have a question here.
Yes, um, it says that it's
the commission and staff are are, they shall have to disclose, but it doesn't say that the news media may not disclose.
That's why you do, um, these are your rules, they're not the news media's rules. But at the beginning of each executive session, you do the statement that that it's not for disclosure, you need to state that each time you go on.
So I don't understand why it's not appearing.
It makes it easy, your rules, if you want to add it, it might make sense to add that, as one more thing. So so, you know, it's such as if they haven't adopted yet, you can always change those regulations. You can't take final action on anything in an executive session, so you can talk and come to consensus on what your action is going to be, but you have to do the final action in your actual public meeting. You don't have to go into all the details, you can come out to the public meeting and say, I move that we move forward with the parameters that we outlined in the second session on this issue. So you can still do that confidential, but you have to take that action and vote on it in the public meetings. Um, I saw passing your votes, it will hold an annual restraint in January. Uh, set your annual goals, so you did go. Uh, city department heads should give an annual department update addressing current and future projects. Retreats are subject to open meeting and public practice laws in Oregon. One of the Oregon laws is that you have to hold all your meetings within your jurisdiction. So you can call it a retreat, but you can't retreat outside the city. You could retreat to a restaurant, I guess, but anyway. Um, I think that in some people retreating where they're citizens couldn't be a public meeting, but they can't retreat out of town, so you can hold it with it. Think on officer duties, so the mayor's duties, or the county president, or commission president, or the mayor's absence. Presumably for deliberations, have to vote on all questions. But they're certain of the figure of order and enforce your commission rules. You access the mayor, the president, the funds with the mayor. If the mayor and president are absent, and a firm is present, well, you're only three of you there. The president, um, the senior member of the commission, three serves orders. First part. Um, three hundred miles for duties, um, they call the order, so the uh ruling of the commission shall be called to order and conducted by the presiding officer. Uh, preservation of order, commissioners, staff, and members of the public treat one another with dignity and respect. These are all in section four, preservation of order continues. Pre-siding officer shall prefer ordering the quorum, the spirit of the task on personalities or including of commissioners' notice. So if people start dating personally, we talked about, then that's part of the pre-siding officer's duties. Confined commission or debates, a question under discussion, so if you get off on a tangent, pull the group back, remove persons in attendance to defend disorderly, abusive or disruptive. And the officer can summon the citizens of the place or other staff maintaining orders, so a sergeant and a sergeant, something like that. Hopefully that won't happen. Yeah, and and it's critical to have a pre-siding officer who who maintains that order because things can get out of hand and and uh and I've worked with communities where the the mayor is not real strong. real strong at that type of thing, and the rest of the council should be supporting the mayor and helping like that. Anyone asking to speak must go through recognized by the presiding officer, which we talked about earlier, the following are sufficient to be removed by the sergeant at arms after getting a warning. Um, most of the broader disruptive, profane language, making loud noises, violent, destructive actions. Um, I would be sitting in the back doing this. I don't know if I can call city attorney. At this moment, you can make them stop saying it, you can just ask them not to say it in the meeting. Yeah. That's why, that I do that disclaimer, yeah. I would ask my city attorney. Um, and, and so these are your rules. You might want to ask that and make sure whatever your rules say is something that you can actually enforce. Uh, local ban is to furnish things, receivable to obey the local conduct, and receivable to obey the order of the presiding officer. So basically, anything that upsets the meeting. Point of order, presiding officer and the vice attorney shall determine all the features. So you probably ask the attorney then. Um, you have to like, say, you know, uh, a judgment by the presiding officer. Uh, if an appeal is made, the commission is asked about whether the actions proposed by the presiding officer should be sustained, so since the presiding officer makes a ruling, a majority of the commission disagrees. And then it's the open. Presiding officer, presiding officer submitted for a vote, fairly stated for the record, and a roll out, roll call vote was taken. So after the discussion, the motion and the second and discussion, and then when you're ready, take the vote and the mayor should restate the, um, question. Or sometimes the mayor will ask the reporter to read it from the minutes, the actual motion. But the mayor's got to make sure it's clearly stated. Substitutions, if the presiding officer, presiding officer can call upon the president or another commissioner, preside temporarily for the meeting, so if you have to abstain from the vote, remove yourself, then you can ask someone to give over. You need to leave from that. Doesn't, the appointment doesn't mention who you want to adjourn the meeting. So agenda is your official order of business. The agenda is prepared by the city manager in consultation with the mayor. So you have rules that say what the order of your agenda is. Then the manager works with the mayor because your charter says the mayor sets the agenda, the order of business within the council rules. Agenda of the list of subjects to be considered at the meeting. Items placed on the, so the place item on, have you, is there any clear on how you place items on the agenda? Okay, you can do that by consensus of the authority of the commission, or the city manager can bring things, the words that need to be considered. So, um, say, uh, councillor wants to have an agenda item considered, they need to have it one meeting and ask it to be added to the next agenda? Okay. So you're not going to have a councillor commentant part of your agenda, and that's when you bring that up, okay? And then the manager, because there are a lot of cities that used to come up, but don't come directly from the council that needs to be considered and added to the agenda. Order of business can change or items can be added or deleted by a majority of the commission. So if you have a hundred people sitting in the audience, I'm not sure they all fit in this room, but seven hundred people sitting in the audience, and they're wanting to testify on a public hearing that is scheduled to be at the end of the meeting, you may want to bump the public hearing up so that they can, it's, but you don't have to, and they would take the majority of other commissions. Each then, then item typically is a commission report with a background report, a staff recommendation, precedent facts, another for ininformation necessary to make decisions. So you, you should probably have a cover sheet with each agenda. And the manager's responsible for approving staff recommendations presented at the council, so um, the planner has, the manager would review those recommendations and approve them before they go on the agenda of recommendation. Commissioners are encouraged to contact the city manager prior to the meeting if they have questions. Also, I was talking about earlier, that way they can make sure they can research the nothing to your questions if they're not readily available. Consent agenda, so you do use consent agenda. See if they're generally not controversial items, don't require further discussion. Um, when I said, cause all our consent agenda item, uh, we had, we had some more rules on this where if it was an item that's gonna, hundred and fifty thousand dollars and it was in the budget, if you go on the consent agenda, anything over that had to go. So you, if, if at some point you could, or you probably have rules upon it, you should make. Uh, bitches can request any item be removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration. Uh, and then that separate consideration is immediately following the consent agenda. So if I said your order, well, this is your order of business, so you do call the order of isolated ceremonies, proconations, presentations, adoption of the agenda. So if all her, people can ask to, should we arrange the order of business? So then the council says, yeah, this is how we're gonna move forward. The public hearings come first, so that's kind of the gate step Jeff I used. Uh, general business ordinance, those first readings come first, second readings come next, and then resolutions. Uh, and your consent agenda comes later in the meeting, okay? So it comes after that other business communications. So then after you go through that communication, city managers report, mayor's report, appointments, sports, admissions, and then official reports, and adjournment.
When we get the answer to the agenda, that's the problem with people who put all items in the seventh agenda.
Find an adopted agenda, so they hold them, okay. Okay, so then you know what to do. Agenda packets of order business. Summer board responsible for compiling the agenda and supporting materials. Uh, record, print, records, during the packet and transmits it electronically. Each commissioner and staff member on the Friday before each regular meeting. Are your meetings on Wednesdays? Okay, so you have five days. Uh, during the packets, prospective meetings are transmitted with as much time as feasible prior to the meeting, and you don't have miles ahead of any cities who don't do it electronically, so. Good for you. Uh, agendas, spreads, mentioning shall be posted in the following places, so it says that, um, there's another spread in the lobby of City Hall. One will be posted at the library, Pioneer Community Center, and on the city's website, so you put your electronic out here on the website, that's cool. Agendas are sent electronically to the news media and interested citizens. Stephen, please ask for a line and sound up North Pacific. That's great.
They do that on the other end of the Oregon Trail, though.
Uh, commission can create committees to assist in the conduct of the charter of its charter duties. Mayor shall appoint members of the committees at the mayor's sole discretion. The servants have a special purpose of the committee for which the committee was created, has been pumped, so you don't have committees that are human for the duty. Um, all of the committees involve public function. All committees have, shall be advisory unless otherwise provided by ordinance. And I, um, it's your planning missions, not just advisory. And your budget phase. All committees are subject to public meeting laws. So then, um, reconsideration of action. We talked earlier about respecting the, the vote of the decision of the majority, which is kind of, and, and this was on Robert's rules of order, too, that, um, if you voted with the majority, then you can ask for something to be reconsidered or sit for the action to be reconsidered. At the same meeting or at the next regular meeting, uh, no additional testimony or evidence from the public shall be taken unless the records reopen and notices provided.
Hey, hey, I believe you do function as well, yet the commission was absent from the vote, that it can actually request something come forward again as well.
That's how it's rules, so you might want to put that in.
Okay, I think we've done that before.
If that's the way you want to operate, everybody agrees.
If you have a two to three situation, for example, that, uh, of those meetings weren't there, or one absentee or something. I think we've done that in passing, where our rules haven't said that.
Yeah. If that's the one you want to operate and authority is real, that's, then you might want to change that in the rules.
If, if the, uh, the majority of the city commission rules on, on a nationwide transportation, and the mayor, as an example, is a a member of the emission, going to J-PAC, the Metro Transportation Authority, does the mayor have to, uh, kind of vote as the, uh, the line or the approved, uh, uh, position of the, of the commission?
I would say if it's something the commission has taken a vote on, and the city has the city's position, and the mayor or commissioner appointed to that board to represent the city should make the vote for the majority of the council side.
This would be true like, we have a war board, a, a, a part of a group, and/or maybe, uh, it could be a sewer board or something, or in a shared sewer environment. I, I'm just trying to tell off of a, kind of the understanding of, of if the commission itself approves something, then that's the line that the people should take.
Well, and I think farther down here, but, but most council rules have something in that you need to be clear whether you're saying personal opinion or the opinion of the commission. But if you're appointed to represent the commission, you need to represent the commission's the city, not your own personal opinion. Okay. Um, any other questions on that? Oh, okay. So anyway, the whole point of the reconsideration, I haven't, you know, been in the majority, is that if you weren't the majority and you could ask items to be reconsidered, you never make the final decision because every time you didn't like the decision of the majority, you just asked that it be reconsidered. Uh, once the motion is reconsidered, no motion for further reconsideration shall be made without the unanimous consent of the commission. So you can reconsider at once, but to bring it back up again, everybody has to wait. Now, Doug says unanimous consent of the commission. Uh, does that mean unanimous consent of the commission, that or if only four people were there, you still have to have consent of that other person? You may want to clarify that before you vote. National electronic devices, this is kind of a quick party, I mentioned this one before, but it's cool. And, and my, it's hard if you all have computers that you refer to and use. Bitchers will not send or receive electronic communications concerning any matter pending on the agenda during the meeting, so you cannot be emailing in the middle of the meeting. Bitchers will not use electronic communications devices to access information on issues not being considered during any commission meeting. Um, any of the comments benefices regarding a qualified judicial man, matter to be considered by the commission is an extricate conduct and shall be disclosed. These rules do not prohibit the use of city-provided interactive computers on the dais reviewing the meeting agenda package. I think it's to make sure that you all have the same information to make the decision from the top for us. Now, the, I mean, is this a new rule, or it's, well, well done, I think it's great. Um, it came out of issues that had, had happened in all the cities where municipal councilors were at the dais. You go on your blog site and read everything. Right, it's good policy. Climate, you went for landing terms. Um, I, I'm just glad you're going to be doing some of that with your city attorney, so I, I just, it's covered that. And, are they? Are there any other questions or anything else I need to cover, or I, I haven't worn it all, sure. But thank you, it's very nice to meet all of you, and maybe I'll see you around town, I'm just getting my sister.
If all people eat, and everybody, the commission I've handed out these flyers, I announced a couple of meetings, both of them deal with, uh, uh, with, uh, sustainable communities, specifically the, um, the air, air quality issues, um, and, uh, the ones at climate leadership summit, this has to be registered for. If anybody else is interested in looking at these flyers, they're welcome to the safety zone. Yes. The one, the set of rules for sustainable communities is being held in the, um, metros, she, commission chambers, I don't think we'll be able to hold too many, but climate leadership, uh, summit is open, but you do need to register for it. Who else? I got, yeah, I do too. Oh, I like it, okay, I got you, yeah. Well, with that, I think we'll, we have seen two people. I don't know if any staff have, any staff have anything needed. We're kind of up there next to budget, so if I'm going to catch in the next couple of days, that'll be one, that's all.
Um, Saturday is onward, Oregon is starting first with two presentations here at the college, and it's one, one, three?
Is it the same presentation twice or two different presentations?
Two parts.
Oh, I see. It's like a quiz, as to which one I would attend.
Well, there was one in glass, or, oh, girls last week, but it's already been done in two parts.
Oh, okay.